Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on February 17, 2022. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the amended resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 22, 2022, that is, through January of 2023. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 7, 2022. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 14, 2022 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the ongoing state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8, 2020, and again on January 6, 2021. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. When an ordinance referral is up, whoop, we don't have an ordinance referral on the agenda tonight, so I'm going to skip that paragraph. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand using the button at the center of the bottom of the participant screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands are raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
I saw him.
Mr. Quinn? Thank you, Tim. I can't hear you. Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Bodikheimer?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Announcements. I have a couple. Are there any? Mr. La Place?
Chair, I just wanted to give you an update on Mr. Purcell. He is joining the meeting as an attendee because he has his class of 20 students at the College of New Jersey with him. So he's been located. He's in the attendees.
Okay, well, we'll bring him over to talk about his memo when the time comes.
Yeah, I think he said that he'll use his phone, but we'll figure it out when we get to that.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. Are there other announcements from board members or from staff? Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I assume that I've resolved my vocal problems. Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Just a report that the Ad hoc Committee regarding the former, the replacement for the former Site Plan Review Advisory Board has met twice. We had an organizational meeting and then a meeting with Planning Board Council and Municipal Council. And board members can expect to receive a second set of notes probably early next week from the session that we had with the attorneys. And we'll be meeting with professional staff hopefully next Friday. I still haven't heard back from everyone on a time, but we will be setting a time tomorrow. And our work continues.
Great. Thank you for that. Couple of quick things from me. I don't mean to put you on the spot, Jerry, but I did note that objectors to the Simplify Living project on Humbert Street have filed a lawsuit. Jerry, could you just briefly tell the board what happens next? It's not anything that comes back to the board, but I just thought people should know.
Correct. I mean, it'll, obviously, it's in court. They have filed a complaint. We will file an answer within the next two weeks. They have also named Simplified Living as a co-defendant, so they will be another defendant. And the way this works, it's all based upon the record before the court, but that's going to be pretty voluminous in this case because the hearing was very long and there were a lot of exhibits, et cetera. And what they're trying to invalidate the approval on the grounds that it's arbitrary and capricious. The variances were not supported by adequate proofs. And that's pretty much it, that the variances were not properly granted and not being properly granted, the application should fail. But they also say, even independent of that, they thought the board just did not have sufficient basis in the record to support an approval.
Okay.
There won't be a jury trial. It'll just be on that record. And then we'll have probably some maybe motions, conference calls, and just ultimately briefing an oral argument.
Okay, good. Thank you. And then lastly, I just wanted to point out that in preparation for the board's retreat, which is a week from Saturday, you'll get an agenda, of course, a final agenda. And you'll also get a link to a presentation about affordable housing, the town's affordable housing plan and progress toward meeting its requirements. This presentation was made on December 21, I think it was, of last year, by Kevin Van Highes with Councilwoman Mia Sax offering extra details. And it's a really good overview. There's tons of important information in there. So we ask that members of the board look at that. It's about 25 or 30 minutes long. It starts about 30 minutes into the meeting that you'll get a link to. So watch it and enjoy sometime before next Saturday. That's all I have in the way of announcements. Any last thoughts before we dive into the minutes from anybody? Okay. We have four sets of minutes tonight, starting with February 18, 21, and also March 4, March 11, and March 18. All of them, no, the first three were regular meetings. The 18th was a special meeting. Is it okay? I know I asked this question, I've asked this question more than once. Can we move them all at once and invite people who are eligible? Should we do them one by one? Let's just do them one by one. That's simple.
Yeah, I think we should. It becomes all, some people can hold on one, but not another.
Yes.
I could read aloud, I could read aloud the people who are eligible for each set.
Okay, all right. So the minutes of February 18, 2021.
That would be Mr. Chow, Mr. Cohen, Mr. McGowan, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Quinn, Ms. Sacks, Mr. Tex Arney, and Mrs. Wilson.
Okay. So if any of those folks has comments or suggestions or something, we'll hear them now. Otherwise, would someone like to move those minutes?
I'll move them.
Moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. Quinn. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. The minutes of March 4, 2021.
That would be Ms. Capizoli, Mr. Chow, Mr. Cohen, Mr. McGowan, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Quinn, Ms. Sacks, Mr. Tex Arney, Mrs. Wilson.
Okay, thank you. If there are no comments or suggestions, would someone like to move those, please?
I'll move them.
Okay.
Moved by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Ms. Capizoli. Thank you both. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody abstaining or voting no? Okay. Minutes of March 11, 2021, regular meeting. Carrie?
Mr. Chow, Mr. Cohen, Mr. McGowan, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Quinn, Ms. Sacks, Mr. Tex Arney, Mrs. Wilson.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. McGowan, seconded by Mr. Cohen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Thank you. And then finally, the special meeting of March 18, 2021.
Just before I read the names of those individuals, Mr. O'Donnell advised that I needed to make an edit to the roll call on the last matter. So I'm taking his name off because he was not present. So that would be Mr. Chow, Mr. McGowan, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Tex Arney, and Mrs. Wilson.
Good.
And, excuse me, but just for the record, my name actually appeared as absent in the roll call, but it appeared as an affirmative vote in the very last item.
Ah, so the minutes need to be corrected.
So that is where the minutes need to be corrected.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. That's good to know. I did not catch that when I looked at the minutes. Minutes of the special meeting on March 18.
A move approval.
Did Carrie already list all the people that are eligible? Okay, thank you. Moved by Mr. Quinn. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that you, Mr. McGowan?
It was.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Thank you.
Chair, I just wanted to mention that Carrie has been working very, very hard to catch us up on our backlog of minutes. So I just wanted to acknowledge her hard work.
Thank you. I appreciate you doing that. And Carrie, thank you for plowing through these things. I know it's, well, I won't call it a labor of love. That would not be appropriate, but it can get tedious. Minutes can get tedious. So thank you for getting these done.
You're welcome.
I know you were left with a whole ton of undone minutes when you inherited the secretaryship. So that's really what put us in this position. The hearings tonight, we have one, West Windsor Real Estate. This is preliminary and final major site plan and final subdivision. 176, 182, and 188 fired lane. Block 6802, lots 44, 45, and 46. This is file number P2121-027P/SPF.
Chair, the notice is proper. And Carrie, can you confirm the proof publication service or an order?
Yes, that's confirmed.
Okay, therefore, the board has jurisdiction.
Good. Thank you. Mr. La Place?
Thank you, Chair. Before you this evening is a proposal for a subdivision on a subject property, which is a generally wooded site currently occupied by one uninhabited dwelling. It's located along the westerly side of Route 206, locally known as Bayard Lane. And this particular location is directly west and across the road from Community Park South. It's also just south of the Jug Handle intersection of Route 206 and Mountain Avenue. To the east and to the southeast is the historic Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood. There's some commercial uses along that easterly side of 206, just south of Community Park South. And there are single-family homes and neighborhoods to the south and to the west on the westerly side of 206. This subject property is largely in a single-family residential area. The applicant is proposing a newly configured three-lot subdivision to accommodate the development of three single-family homes. Vehicular access will be off of, will be by a shared driveway with one access point on Route 206. You'll be hearing about that. And the access point is generally in the same location as the existing driveway entrance off of Route 206 for that existing building that's going to be removed, the existing house that's currently in place. There are, it's in the R5 residence zone of the former township. It's permitted use, the houses that are proposed there, the single-family homes. There's no variances that are being requested as part of this subdivision on site plan application. The area is not located within a designated historic district, and there are no designated landmarks. However, it's an interesting spot in terms of the history of Princeton. The site is immediately south of a section of the former trolley line that went between Princeton and Trenton. That trolley easement was absorbed many years ago by the adjoining lots. So it no longer exists. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of the history of the area. And as far as environmental issues, you'll be hearing a lot of this from the engineers, and it's detailed in our Staff Engineering and Zoning Joint Report that there are general wetlands areas on the westerly part of this site. And there's some obvious concerns by both staff and some members of the community about drainage and stormwater management in that area. So that'll be probably a large part of our discussion this evening.
Michael, let me interrupt for a second, realizing that I haven't swung you in. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you have given and will give will be the truth?
I do. And the one thing I wanted to add as well is, in addition to the wet area along the westerly side of this subject property, as I said before, it's a wooded site. There's some very large trees. And staff has raised concern about trying to preserve as many trees on the site as possible. So I think that's a good general overview.
Great. Thank you for that. Are we ready then to hear from the applicant, I assume? And who is here representing the applicant? Wants to start us off, Mr. Crumholtz?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Can you activate your camera, please, sir?
I cannot. It says that I cannot do so.
Oh. Maybe.
You were on.
There we, oh.
I was on before.
Yeah, yeah. Scott, do you want to cut? Do you want to leave and come back and see if that works?
Well, let's see if either Carrie or Justin or somebody.
There we go.
There we go. Yeah.
Hello.
So, Mr. Crumholtz, after your introduction, Mr. Mueller will swear in all of your professionals at once?
Oh, that would be great.
Everybody who needs to be sworn in will do that all at once after you get us going here.
Yeah, well, to be honest, Mr. La Place really, really took the wind from my sails. He did a great opening, pretty much covered everything I have to go over.
You're not the first, you're not the first one to say that.
So I'll just say that tonight I have four witnesses. I have our architect, Dan Ward, who will speak briefly about the design of our proposed home. We have Wayne Ingram from ELS, who will, who's our engineer, who will speak about majority of the project in terms of all the engineering and what we were confronted with about the site. You know, you name it. We also have a representative of the applicant, Mr. Howard Raben, here to answer questions from the board. And also another developer who's helped us along the way, Mr. Mike Lyons, who's here. He's developed in Princeton before, and he's also been a tremendous asset for us. So he may be able to answer a few questions the board may have as well. With that being said, and without duplicating anything, I'll just say that we did go before SPROB. We recognize it was approved, but with many comments, we have gone back to the joint board in some sense and revised our plans to take into consideration some of the comments that were made during the meeting and in the recommendations. So what you'll see tonight is a slight deviation from what had been submitted. Our engineer and architect will go through and discuss what was originally planned and what we have planned at this time. So without further ado, I'd like to, unless there's any questions, Madam Chair or members of the planning board, I'd like to call Mr. Ward. Oh, I see Mr. Raben waving his hand. I think he wants to say something upfront. He can be sworn in first, so.
Yeah, if the four witnesses that Scott mentioned could raise their right hand, I'll swear them in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed? If you could each state your full name and spell your last name.
Mike Lyons, O-Y-O-N-S.
Okay.
Dan Ward, W-A-R-D.
Wayne Ingram, I-N-G-R-A-M.
Howard Raben, R-A-B-I-N.
I'll go right ahead, Mr. Raben.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'll be very brief. I just, I know that West Windsor Real Estate LLC is a corporation, and it might sound like a big corporation, but I just want the folks listening to know that it's, that I'm the managing member, and the only other member of this LLC is my father. I've operated this as a real estate investment corporation since 2003. It's not a huge corporation. It's me and my dad, and we hire business. I'm a business person. I hire professionals like Mike Lyons and Dan Ward and Mr. Ingram and Scott Crumholtz to help me ensure that we build, you know, quality product in a professional way. I want everyone on this call to know that we have heard the comments as we've gone through this process. And I've learned some very hard lessons over the last 10 years that I've owned this property. There is a wetlands at the westerly back left corner of the property. We've been in front of DEP twice. We've got permission to fill what is an isolated wetlands. My understanding that doesn't contribute to a waterway. It's not a waterway. And we've received permission to fill a portion of it. It's, that was a meet too with the DEP. So I just want folks aware of that and were sensitive to that. Also, there are mature trees on the property. It's obvious to anyone who walks the property.
Mr. Raben, you were frozen for maybe 10 seconds there. So can you go back a little bit? You were just, at least, I couldn't hear anything.
I apologize. Sure. Well, I'm not sure.
You were saying you had gotten permission from DEP to fill part of the isolated wetlands, and that's where you got frozen.
Thank you. And we've carefully incorporated the DEP limit of disturbance into the site plan that's been submitted. We understand there are mature trees. It's obvious to everyone who walks the property. There are mature trees that need to be protected and respected and conserved. And we've made every effort to protect those within the site plan. We've drawn the lot lines and the driveways and the curb access all in an effort to avoid impacting those trees. So again, I just want folks to know that we've heard the comments, and we've made every effort to address it. And I'm going to rely on the experts to address it more specifically. Obviously, there are stormwater regulations that are very strict for projects of this scope. And we've made every effort to be fully compliant there as well. And we've, again, we've incorporated the comments of the township experts and the site plan review folks into the plan that we're submitting here. And what you'll see tonight is that we've made efforts to reduce the impervious surface of the driveways. We've scaled down the driveways. We've turned the garages. And all in an effort to address and comply with stormwater management. We understand that access to 206 raises a number of safety concerns. We've submitted a plan that incorporates the single access from the existing driveway, and that's been located and positioned in a way that was carefully selected and calculated to comply with all safety requirements. And again, that was in conjunction with township experts. So I just want folks to know that all of these concerns and many others have been studied by the experts that we hired. And I'm going to obviously let them speak to the specifics and answer your questions. But we think we've planned the site in a way that best accommodates all of those concerns. As a result, I'm urging folks to recognize that this is a plan that requests no variances and is fully compliant with the current zoning. These are half-acre lots. We've complied with every front and side yard setback or floor area ratios, roof heights. Everything has been designed in a way to comply with the regulations. And importantly, I want the people listening to know, my neighbors to know, there are adjacent properties, there are nearby homes, and there's nothing. And over the years, I have heard the concerns regarding the development of this property. It is a wooded lot. There's nothing that we're planning or proposing or doing that would interfere with their quiet enjoyment or their use of the property. This is simply a single-family home that will be, you know, that will become their neighbor. So, and just on a personal note, I want to say that my father was 81 years old when I purchased this property. He's my partner in this, and he's now 92. And I would like him to see the end of this project. I want to finish this. I want to finish this during his lifetime. And, you know, and I think the proposal to build three, what are going to be beautiful homes on single-family lots is a reasonable way to complete this project. So I thank you all for your attention, and I'm going to turn it over to the experts.
Thank you, Mr. Raben.
So with that said, I'd like to call Dan Ward. Unless any members of the planning board have any questions at this point for Mr. Raben, I'd like to call Dan Ward, our architect, to show a little picture of at least one of the homes so you can get an idea of what we're planning.
Yes. We generally hold questions by the board until after all the witnesses for the applicant have testified. Although certainly, if any board member wants to ask any questions of an individual witness, that's fine. We usually do that because sometimes the questions that would be are answered by another witness. Okay, so you're going to qualify, Mr. Ward?
Yes, I will. Mr. Ward, can you give us the benefit of your background and experience?
Okay, I've been a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey since 1980. I've done quite a bit of work in the Princeton area. I think Derek can attest to that. I've been before this board before times. And any questions on that?
We accept your qualifications.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
In that case, Wayne, is it, do you have the rendering you can share? Okay, what's in front of you right now is a rendering of one of the proposed houses. And this is not intended to be taken too literally. It's representative of the kind of architecture we're proposing, a traditional-type building that we think conforms to the type of development pattern we have in that residential neighborhood. The, each individual house will be varied in terms of materials, colors, some architectural features, so that none of these houses will be identical. Though each one will be distinctly different from its neighbor. The houses we're proposing are approximately 4,000 square feet, maybe a little more. We would make some adjustments if we were fortunate enough to sell these houses prior to construction, so we could accommodate the preferences of any particular buyer. But this is kind of representative of where we're headed. This is kind of our model. It's, like I said, a 4,000-plus-square-foot house, four bedrooms, four and a half bathrooms, on two levels, with a two-car garage. with a two car garage. Originally, we had anticipated using side entry garages so that the garage doors wouldn't be visible from from Route two oh six. But in response to comments we received when we presented this to Sprab, we decided to go ahead and make them front entrance garages. Primarily because it permits us to reduce the amount of paving and lower the impervious coverage for the for the property.
Mr. Ward, this is part of the application packet, the sheet, correct?
Pardon me?
This this sheet is part of the application packet, part of the submission, correct?
The 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 original application sheet had the side entrance garages.
Okay, so this is this is so if you could if you could identify this for the record then, and maybe I I guess we should make it an exhibit then. Why don't we make it exhibit A one?
Okay.
And then just if you could describe what that would be.
Okay, exhibit A one, there are is a sheet with first floor plan, bottom right hand corner, second floor plan, top right hand corner, and on the left side, a rendered front elevation of the house. And the the change I was just describing, you can see on the left side there, partly obscured by the shadow, two garage doors. With the original submission, those wouldn't have been visible in this view. They would have been on the side. But like I say, in response to Sprab, we redesigned that portion of the house and such that we have front entrance garages. Sprab didn't think it was a big deal because it's facing two oh six. It's not really a part of a kind of neighborhood street. And like I said before, it permits us to reduce our impervious coverage. Any other, any questions on any of that?
I I'm sorry, I have a just a quick question, which is I know that Sprab was suggesting flipping the houses as well so that the the large roof expanse would have a southern exposure. The rendering makes it look like it has a southern exposure, but I don't think that the shadow is accurate. And can you just comment, you know, confirm that?
Yeah.
The shadow would not be.
Yeah, we we did not flip the houses. We changed the the garage to front entrance. But flipping the houses would mean that the driveway would get longer. We would have to extend it to the northern side of the most northern house. So we we did, in the interest of not increasing our impervious coverage, we did not do that.
Okay. But you're correct, Mr. Cohen, as it's shown, the 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 shadow would never fall the way it's falling right now, I guess the.
Right, that was.
Good catch, good catch. I only showed it that way because it's kind of shows the three dimensional nature of the front elevation. But you're right, the sun would be coming from the left side typically.
Uh, yes, Mr. Le Place.
Um, I I think even though the shadow may be shown incorrectly, I think it represents an important point that personally, I did not agree with Sprab and I I like when garage doors do not face a public street. However, I think the fact since this is stepped back from the front elevation of the building, it it kind of it it it's a good design alternative in that, you know, the part of the house where people live is is prominent and the part of the house where cars live is is recessed, is set back. So I just wanted the applicant to confirm that that is the garage, front elevation of the garage wing is set back from the street further than the front elevation of the house.
Yes, if you look at the first floor plan, that's pretty clear there that the garage is set well back. So it won't be a, well, you'll still see it, but it won't be as prominent.
Right, I think that was a good other way to go. So I just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
And Mr. Ward, you would indicated at the beginning of your testimony that this was just representative, but I take it from what you've just testified to that basically the applicant commits to having the garage set back.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Representative, I'm I'm speaking more in terms of colors, textures, materials.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question, Louise, or would you prefer that I wait?
Uh, go ahead. I think that if you're if you're sure that this is a question for the architect.
Um, well, it's specifically about the garage, the garage placement, which is that I I have to concur with Michael. I very much do not like the garage facing the street. And I'm just wondering how much impervious coverage was removed by this placement? And I'm wondering if there's a, if you have any visuals of what your original plan had been.
Yeah, I will speak to that. It's part of it. That's more of a site planning question.
We can, we don't, if you you don't have to answer that if this is, it doesn't have to be addressed right now. I would just like to see it at some point.
Okay.
Yeah, Wayne Ingram will address that. Absolutely.
Okay.
Anything else on architecture?
I mean, no more questions. You tell us if there's anything else that you want to address.
I I think that that pretty much covered it as far as the the architecture is concerned.
Madam Chair.
Oh, Mr. Quinn, sorry, I did not see you there.
Confirming that's a porch that we're seeing there.
It is, yes.
Thank you. We like porches, or I do, anyway.
Most towns do these days.
Yes.
And and I think we can expect, as with the setback of the garages, that there will be porches.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Uh, it's Mr. O'Donnell. Will there be full basement, full foundation dugout for these three houses?
Yes, that's our anticipation, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Ward? If not, uh, Mr. Crumholtz, who who's next?
Yeah, that would be Wayne Ingram. Yeah, hi, Wayne. Could you give the, excuse me, could you give the board the benefit of your education and experience?
Sure. So I I am a licensed engineer and surveyor in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed as an engineer for about thirteen years and as a surveyor for about nine. I've appeared before probably over seventy five municipalities throughout the state and have appeared before both boards here in Princeton.
Okay. We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, are you going to share your screen? Because otherwise we'll there you go.
Just jump over to our exhibit. Okay, great. Um, so I guess I might as well call this exhibit A two.
Yep.
This is a colorized rendering of our subdivision plan. All right, so, you know, as already been stated, this is an application for a major subdivision and site plan. That'll involve the reconfiguration of three existing lots into three new lots, which will now conform to zoning. Uh, property fronts on Route two oh six, also known as Baird Lane, and currently contains the one single family structure nearest to the driveway opening. Uh, the proposal will involve the demolition of that structure and all other features to facilitate the creation of these three new lots. Um, we are proposing a single access point on Route two oh six, which is a state highway and will require an NJ DOT permit most likely as we are proposing, you know, minor shifting of that driveway and improvements, you know, in order to accommodate some of the the comments we have received. Uh, in order to limit access to the roadway, you know, which again is a more major road is preferable, um, we're proposing an internal shared driveway, uh, which will run across the frontage of of the lots and connect the three dwellings uh, through an access easement. We are at this point with this exhibit you have before you and which reflects the changes we heard from Sprab, um, showing a reduced width of the driveway as we go across to the various lots. So the the first two houses would have a fifteen foot access and the last house would be accessed by a ten foot drive, which is more typical to what you'd see, you know, as part of just a a normal single family residence, uh, because that is the last house that would be connected, uh, doesn't really have as many concerns with, you know, conflicting traffic. That was a comment we received at that meeting. Although, you know, I do note that, you know, there is some conflict between some of the various review letters in the requests that were made with regard to that with. Um, you know, generally we're we're amenable to whatever is preferred with respect to that. Um, all the lots, regardless of whether they access on the shared driveway, will maintain their frontage on Route two oh six. Um, and again, that that driveway will combine that access, uh, which is really a safer alternative, um, you know, in terms of access to a state highway. Uh, the lots will exceed the required lot size of twenty one thousand seven hundred eighty square feet and are they are all over twenty four thousand. And all of the, you know, frontages, setbacks, widths, uh, all exceed the minimum requirements. So we are not requesting any variances associated with the application. Uh, as you did here, uh, we do have an isolated wetland area on the western portion of the lot. Uh, this is permitted to be filled under a wetlands general permit, which which is in hand. Uh, that permit will not be for the removal of the entire wetland, uh, only for a portion thereof in order to construct the improvements. And the idea there was, you know, if we didn't need to eliminate it, uh, we would not attempt to do so as that would also, you know, improves not only drainage and the environment, but also allows us to maintain uh, the existing trees that we can within that area. Uh, we have provided a tree removal plan and attempted to design the site to minimize that tree removal. Uh, we are further trying to revise those plans in an effort to save as many trees as possible. Um, we have proposed to relocate the driveway in an attempt to save one very large tree in the front. Um, obviously, you know, we're subject to other reviews of agencies, DOT being one of them. Uh, you know, so we'll do what we can, um, you know, in our final design, which again is still subject to some decisions, um, you know, to be made by the board and such. Um, but we, you know, we will attempt to save every tree possible. Um, you know, we certainly, you know, agree to, you know, the comments regarding tree removal. Um, and, you know, those trees which we cannot provide on site because it's simply not practical uh, would be provided in locations, you know, that would would be chosen, um, you know, to to meet the requirements of the tree removal ordinance. Um, stormwater management is, uh, you know, somewhat complicated system on this property. Uh, we're proposing uh, multiple underground chamber systems, uh, one essentially along the frontage at the lowest point of the, uh, towards the street. Uh, another underneath the the pavement of the driveways. And then the light blue area you see on our exhibit at the rear of the this one lot in the north northwest corner. That would be the bio retention basin, um, which would provide most of our water quality treatment for the site uh, and from which we will have our discharge point. So because we have, you know, multiple, um, discharge locations on the property in terms of our slopes and drainage areas. Um, and again, you know, in in efforts to minimize our disturbance and tree removal on the lot, we located those features under the driveway and in the frontage where we had no choice but to disturb anyway. One second.
You gotta go.
Sorry about that. And so we we intend to use that to meet our stormwater requirements for the site. Um, we obviously understand there are some comments outstanding, uh, which we have reviewed. Uh, we've already drafted up, you know, revisions, uh, to ensure that what we show you is, uh, you know, fairly accurate to what we proposed. Uh, but obviously, there's going to be some changes here uh, as we attempt to comply, uh, and also with, uh, you know, any changes that are requested in terms of the the width of the internal driveway. Um, so that's that's essentially what's proposed in the the application. Um, you can see some representatives, uh, landscaping that we propose here, which, you know, includes trees to be installed along the frontage and and along the perimeter of the site. Uh, some some shrubbery, uh, obviously there will be, you know, some additional plantings, you know, for foundation plantings and such. Um, questions were raised, obviously, as to, you know, why we couldn't locate more, um, you know, along our frontage and, you know, we have some practical difficulties there um, as we try to juggle the competing, um, needs of landscaping and stormwater management. You know, obviously, we have to keep landscaping a certain distance away. We have to grade things appropriately to make those things work. Um, and, you know, unfortunately, there simply isn't enough room to provide anymore um, without making other sacrifices, um, you know, or, you know, getting further expanding our limited disturbance, which would be more detrimental to the to the areas where we're trying not to disturb through the application. So that's that's essentially our our proposal.
Wayne, right off the bat, if I could just refer you to the question, it was just asked about the how much impervious coverage we were able to save based upon the adjustments we made since Sprab. Can you answer that question?
Sure, and actually I'll just, um, I don't have an exact number for you, but I can show you what the what the differential looks like, which I think is probably more more telling anyway. Um, let me share. So you can see here, this was the original plan uh, that was presented and you can see the side entry drives. So, you know, you see this very large area because essentially we needed at least thirty feet behind these driveways to allow cars to back up and reverse out into the shared driveway. And as you see in the original plan, this was for a fifteen foot wide continuous driveway across the frontage. Um, but with the new proposal, again, I'll go back to the other exhibit. Uh, you can see how how much that's really been reduced in this scenario. So instead of the, you know, again, a very similar footprint to the home, but by relocating the driveway, you know, we no longer have this thirty foot deep area on the side of the home leading out to the front. Um, you know, so you're you're saving at at least six hundred square feet, I'd say, per lot. Um, on top of what, you know, because now you're you're able to do your backup and turnaround, uh, in the shared driveway. Uh, and then again, uh, some some more savings with, you know, a reduction in the the driveway width. Um, but again, with that, you know, again, we I I I can clearly see there's some competing uh, requests with that in terms of the width to provide. We can accommodate any width that's requested. We just, you know, really need to know more about, you know, kind of what's going to win out here in terms of the, uh, you know, the the width that everyone considers most appropriate.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just, um, in in regard to that, um, I'm assuming, Wayne, that you're talking about the the traffic engineers report and concern about emergency vehicle maneuvering space and stuff like that. And I don't know if there's a question for you or for the traffic consultant, but it occurred to me that, you know, having some area planted but stabilized base would be a good way to accommodate emergency vehicle um, maneuvering because it's going to be a rare instance when they're going to have to be there. And I I would certainly hate to have pavement, you know, for something that happens once every ten years, you know, if we can, if we can do a planted area with stabilized base, I think that would be preferable.
Yeah, I think that's a fine alternative. I mean, you know, we may not, you know, having to do curb if we do something like that, um, you know, so that we can have it be mountable. But, you know, again, on a small scale residential development like this, I don't I don't see that as a problem. And and you're right. I mean, that would allow you to keep, you know, an area, you know, fifteen or sixteen feet wide, which, you know, essentially more important is the ambulance. You know, my guess is that, you know, due to our proximity to the street, a lot of fire trucks might just stay in the road, you know, rather than circulating through the site. Um, but in any event, you know, we we would be happy to provide that. And, um, you know, we certainly agree to, I mean, frankly, all the comments in the review letters, um, but, you know, certainly provide turning templates to, you know, to show how, you know, those emergency vehicles can safely access the site.
Thanks.
Wayne, we we were asking for a few waivers. Can you comment a little bit about those?
Waivers worth a guard to, I'm sorry, Scott.
We want us to do with the the trash removal.
In terms of, well, specifically, I mean, you know, I think there was a request that we talk about, you know, what what kind of, you know, waste we have on the property. I believe that was in Mr. Purcell's letter. You know, we have, uh, it it's an average home. So we're, you know, as I did the math based on, you know, published data on volumes, we're looking at, you know, essentially three tons per year, but the to discuss the trash removal, I think we're essentially looking at, you know, individual, um, you know, cans which, you know, would be brought to the street. That would be the the proposal, as I understand it. Um, you know, um, you know, between the individual lots.
When you say brought to the street, you mean to the share? When you say brought to the street, you mean to the shared driveway or to the to two oh six?
I I would think to two oh six, I mean, we have provided access, uh, you know, we have individual walkways, uh, to lead down to a new sidewalk. Which will be constructed along the roadway, um, so logically, you know, it would kind of make sense to have everybody do it in front of their own homes. Um, you know, rather than, you know, come two hundred feet down the roadway to put it in one combined location.
Makes sense.
Yeah, that would make sense if it. If if you don't have to, you know, clear trees to make that happen. Otherwise, I think taking them to the to the end of the driveway is. Not unreasonable.
The the trees that have to be removed would be removed anyway, um, because. You know, be obviously, we have a wetland on our property, so there are areas with shallow groundwater. You know, we we have to design a stormwater system that, you know, can accommodate, you know, that, and, you know, we're doing some regrading of the on the front of the property. Uh, and essentially to install that system, so, you know, uh, that that's what's necessitating the tree removal, not the need to have the walkways. Which, you know, we can obviously move side to side, uh, in order to save any trees, I mean, that that would not be the reason that any tree would be removed.
Um, is the regrading and stormwater systems also while you're while you're clearing all that land behind the houses? It looks like. You know, a lot that is essentially totally wooded right now is going to be completely cleared and then regraded. In order to create a drainage system, is that, am I? Do I have that right or?
I'll defer to, uh, you know, sheet seven of our plan set, uh, as submitted, and again, this reflects the older, uh, layout. Um, so again, it's going to be slightly reduced in terms of impervious, but the disturbance limits don't end up changing much. Um, but as you can see, uh, we have this, as I mentioned, a, uh, underground chamber system along the frontage. Uh, we have this graded area, um, which is going to come down about three feet. Um, and behind that is the driveway that we're proposing, and we know within that you can see our underground chamber system there. As well as, um, what's now going to be changed because we no longer have the side entry drives. Uh, that will reduce, uh, you know, a bit of this, uh, since we have that reduced impervious. Um, but, you know, behind that, we are, you know, we're going to be grading down to the wetland. But as you can see at the very rear, this is the portion of the wetland that we're not going to be removing. Um, you know, and that will stay in place, it's going to be signed, you know, to as a protected area. Um, and there's no grading or disturbance treatment rule taking place, uh, within that area. Um, so, you know, we we did our best, I think, to minimize our disturbance on the site to only what was necessary. Um, and and stay within the limits of what DEP permitted, um, you know, with with their permit.
And do you have a a permanent deed restriction on the wetland areas in the on those two lots?
Yes, and if that wasn't part of DEP's requirement, you know, I I believe I saw that in the comments, and we certainly agree to, you know, provide the restriction for that, you know, for the area that we. You know, we're we're not touching, um, it's, you know, it it's going to, and we did propose on the plans. Signage to be placed, uh, at the nearest perimeter, uh, to let people know what the area was and that it was protected.
And are you removing trees in order to put that chamber along the front or, uh, maybe I'm using the wrong word, the linear? Stormwater.
Uh, I mean, yes, we are, we are removing trees, I I will show you the tree removal. So this is our was our demolition plan, but just to show you the significant large trees. Um, you know, the really, I mean, the. This is only a one point seven acre site, you know, we are leaving what we can undisturbed, but. You know, to can even at the conforming, you know, sizes that we are, the site needs to be regraded. And, you know, we we don't want to misrepresent, you know, what can be saved here, you know, in order to protect root, you know, root balls and. You know, do the grading that we need to do, um, you know, these are, we believe these trees essentially have to be removed. Regardless of whether we put that stormwater system there, we have to do such significant grading that the trees would not survive, so. You know, we we just essentially located our stormwater systems in the areas that we knew we had to disturb anyway. Um, so that we weren't, you know, disturbing areas, you know, completely separate areas, you know, doing further removal of the wetland area. To accommodate stormwater system, so we figured, you know, let's leave as much of that alone as possible and only work in the areas we we have no choice but to disturb anyway. Um, and then you see here kind of the, you know, the corner, uh, in the western corner of the site where we're locating our bio basin. Uh, that has, you know, the the least amount of trees on the property, so again, that was the intention there, it's a little higher in grade. Um, it's not in the sensitive area and it required the least amount of tree removal.
You know, this might be a question for our own, some of our own. Um, experts. But I'm curious about whether or not the stormwater calculations. Take into account the removal of very big trees that right now soak up giant amount of stormwater. Um, i- is that something that's factored into your stormwater calculations when you're determining? You know, what may go either into the basements or into the basin or downstream?
Oh, in a way, yes, I mean, you know, when you do a stormwater design, you're you're taking the existing conditions. You know, and and evaluating that with a curve number that reflects the the surfaces that are there, so if it's wooded. It's reflecting woods, and then when we replace that with, you know, lawn, which in this case, you know, ends up being fairly minimal, um. You know, if you if you look at the, you know, the the plan again, you know. What, you know, what isn't already paved, you know, we're going to, yes, we're going to have some lawn in the front of the home. But our limits of disturbance are are, you know, fairly close to the rear of the structures, we're not, you know, clearing, you know, to create full lawns here. Um, but, you know, the the post-development conditions are reflective of, you know, the amount of impervious we're putting down. And then, of course, meeting the required reductions across the site, um, you know, that the rules require, so, you know. By the time we, you know, finish complying with all the, you know, comments that have been set forth on stormwater. Uh, there's there's really no question here that there's going to be less offsite, you know, runoff impacts than there are today.
And did you, did I understand someone to say earlier that you had made some changes to the plan in order to preserve trees? That you were, some of the big trees that you were originally planning to remove? Is there any, um, exhibit or image that shows? Trees that were slated for removal that will remain?
The the main trees that, um, you know, we attempted to revise, uh, there's a very large tree, and you know, you can kind of maybe barely make it out of this plan. Uh, because it was existing, but, you know, originally, we were trying to locate the driveway a little further, uh, to the north. Um, but there was a request to save this tree, so again, our intention is going to try to be to save that, and we shifted the driveway over now. You know, if the if the DOT says, you know, you can't do that for some reason, we may have to revisit, but we're going to make the attempt in our application. Um, you know, to position that to to try and save that tree where possible. Um, you know, I think there's some other, uh, you know, limited areas, um. You know, that that, you know, again, we're going to try to save them, but, you know, I I I I don't think we want to necessarily overpromise either. You know, uh, that we can, because, you know. Again, there are sensitive root systems that, you know, again, on mature trees are going to extend a a long distance, and if we're. You know, if we're doing, you know, significant grading, um, you know, it simply may not be possible regardless of whether. You know, the the trunk of the tree, you know, is not disturbed, you know, we're we're going to be grading within twenty feet of it, it, you know, maybe impacted.
And can you address conceptually? The reason for the extensive grading that's being done? Um, does it have to do with stormwater, does it have to do with? You know, trying to achieve basements for your structures, I. There, if you can just address that conceptually for the board, that would be helpful.
I I say a big part of it is is related to stormwater, um, you know, I I I really think for, you know, for the number of homes we have in a conforming application. That the limit of disturbance is really, you know, quite tight, um, you know, the homes are, you know, consistent with, you know, with. You know, what you would expect of the area, um, and even, you know, with the reductions in the impervious surface. You know, in order to create, you know, level areas to accommodate this and, you know, the amount of stormwater management that's required, you know, for for any project really. Um, you know, under current regulations, um, you you know, you need to create large, you know, flat areas to accommodate these features. Um, and and that's, you know, that's really what the majority of the disturbance outside the driveway in the house, uh, is associated with. And, you know, even if that's that grading is just a matter of, you know, you you know, one to two feet of grade change. That, you know, that's still significant enough to, you know, to to damage a a tree, um, if if you're changing that grade around its base. Um, you know, I think, you know, I mean, I guess you could say part of it is related to to basements, but I don't think that's the overriding. You know, issue, it's it's we have to create, you know, uh, certain distances between our stormwater systems and groundwater. And then we have to have certain pitches, uh, to portions of the site to create drainage, um, you know, to those features. So, you know, that that's in essence what, you know, necessitates those changes.
Am I understanding that you're actually? Raising up the grade in order to create distance to groundwater to to fit in, uh, certain types of. Uh. Stormwater facilities?
Uh, yes, so we, I mean, you know, right now, you you have, I mean, roughly like a one hun- hundred and forty two, um. You know, one to one forty five contours on the site. And, you know, we're picking those up to about a one forty seven, so you have like a one to four, one to four or five foot grade change. As we try to bring the lot up, um, in order to create again, that that level system, um, you know, to do our stormwater management. Otherwise, you know, you you're just ending up with a ton of, you know, small interacting systems. Um, it it's just, it's not really an efficient, you know, um, you know, design, I mean. You know, we we really on something this small would like to do as few systems as possible because it's it's efficient and it's the least disruptive to the, uh, to the area.
Wayne, I I know we're going to get some questions, uh, from the public about this, it's already been. Foreshadowed, can you, can you just briefly explain how? We're going to protect the properties around us from from excess stormwater runoff? If you can, in terms of the systems that that you're putting in place.
Well, and again, it is, you know, it's this combination of the of what we're proposing here, you know, we we went through the effort of determining the different drainage areas. You know, we have some that flows straight to the back, we have some that flows to the south, some that flows to the north. Um, you know, our calculations are designed and they're they're going to be reviewed by, you know, multiple agencies at this point. Um, to ensure that we create that reduction, but, you know, again, we have two underground chamber systems and a bio infiltration basin in the rear of the site. Um, you know, and through that, you know, we're required to create reductions and runoff from the pre-existing conditions, so. You know, by the time, you know, the final plan rolls around, you know, of what this will consist of. You know, we're we're going to have been proven that we're, you know, creating substantial reductions in both the two ten and hundred year storms. Uh, from the conditions that you see today. Um, you know, and again, uh, what by saving this wetland area, you know, as to the maximum extent we could. You know, es- essentially acting as another basin on the site, um, you know, for additional runoff. You know, we're attempting to save that as much as possible, uh, to, you know, to keep the, uh, you know, the value that that that's providing. Um, so that's factored into the, you know, into the equations as well, um, so there should be no increase in runoff on any adjacent property.
Thank you. I have a question of. Will these two property, I'm not sure if this is for you, Mr. Ingram, uh, but will these two properties be formed as an association or will they be? Just individually owned and who will be responsible for maintenance on the bio retention? Uh. The bio retention of.
Yes, that's a, that's a good.
As well as the, uh, the shared driveway.
Yes, that will be, there will be a homeowners association formed and a deed filed, and the three homeowners will be responsible together. To maintain the driveway, snow removal, refuse, you 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 name it.
Uh, Mr. Quinn, you had your hand up?
Uh, thank, thank you, Madam Chair, so, uh, you would, you answered Mr. O'Donnell's question about. Snow removal, but that the maintenance of the, of the stormwater management system will also fall under the. The auspices of this small homeowners association?
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, my, the real reason I raised my hand was to ask about the curb cut and traffic. I don't know whether, Mr. Ingram, you're the person I should be directing the question to. Uh, there were several times in the reports mentioned, are you just? Using the existing curb cut for the house that's being demolished on the site?
No, we're we're gonna, I mean, we're going to make a shift, uh, I mean, we'll try to, it'll probably be consistent in some fashions, but it is going to be improved. Um, you know, we want to, you know, widen it out, you know, make it meet, um, you know, requirements in terms of, you know, something DOT will approve in terms of a. You know, more of a regulated access, um, you know, obviously, the the existing driveway was, you know, probably done long before. You know, the current standards, and now it's going to handle, you know, three houses instead of one, so it's in the same general vicinity, but it will be modified.
So it'll move a little north, so it's not directly next to the driveway for, I think that's one fifty four. Baird Lane, correct?
We did have it located, uh, further into the site, and now it's going to be located a little bit further, uh, south and, uh, closer to the, uh. You know, back closer to the neighbor, which is again, we're a little closer to where the, uh, the previous driveway, uh, was located.
And that was, uh, they said before, in order to, uh, try to save a. Uh, avoid removing a great big tree.
Mm-hmm. And I, and they'll be, obviously, the the homeowners and their visitors will make left and right turns. Out, out of the main driveway.
Uh, again. Unless the DOT, you know, creates, I mean, that that's part of their review, if there's any restrictions they need for safety, that, you know, they're obviously going to put that into their permit requirements.
And could you, uh, address some of the concerns about bike and pedestrians pedestrian safety? Um, for the sidewalk and and thank you for improving the sidewalk, uh, there. Um, do you expect that there will be issues with, uh, because that sidewalk runs? Pretty much the entire length of. Of, uh, Baird Lane State Road along there. Could you just address, uh? Bicycle safety, for instance?
I mean, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think anything we're doing here is having a a certainly any negative impacts on that. I mean, by providing, you know, the this, uh, you know, conforming sidewalk on the property. You know, we've now created a separation where, you know, pedestrians can walk safely outside of any traffic lane. You know, nothing other than our driveway is is having any impact on the roadway, you know, and and bicyclists who are, you know, possibly, you know, going down the street. And I I think that was, you know, again, one of our our safety considerations we tried to make with the shared act, you know, access. Is, you know, we're limiting our our curb cuts and the, you know, the locations in which, you know, vehicles will be exiting. Um, you know, even though we're increasing traffic, you know, per se, you you have one existing home. You know, but each one only, you know, essentially generates about ten trips per day, so we're adding about twenty trips in total. Uh, which is really quite the minimus, um, you know, in in the scheme of, you know, of traffic. Um, but, you know, having that be at one location, there really won't be interference between the homes, but it also makes sure that, you know, bicyclists are, you know, aren't. Having to look out quite as much for, you know, every, you know, hundred feet, they're looking for the next opening to be cautious of, you know, this, this is probably in the in the most. Uh, conspicuous location, you know, furthest from the curve, has the best visibility, uh, on this side a lot, and that's, you know, that's what we try to consider in the design.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Texarney?
Yes, so, um. I guess, uh, I wanted to address some of the, uh, points made in the PEC memo. And the executive summary sort of has a mix of recommendations or questions for. Um, the, I guess, engineer and then also for the architect, so I'm going to try to. Um, address the questions for the engineer and then maybe circle back to the architect if they can skip that, you know, when when architects spoke earlier. So, um, I guess the first thing, um, uh, Chairwoman, uh, Chair, uh, Wilson kind of was talking about. Um, in terms of the trees, and I I guess, you know, one of the, um, comments he he made was to, uh, reroute the the common drive. And I was wondering if it's possible to, like, push, um, the houses back. A little bit, because it seems like all the mature trees are are generally along the road. And I like, I think that by potentially pushing the the dri- the the driveway back a little bit, you might be able to save some, I know that. You talk about regrading and damaging root structures, but I I I just was wondering if that, um, moving the the driveway back was a possibility.
Well, you know, I think we have competing problems here again, you know, we, the what the wetland, which is what the, you know, the DEP is concerned about maintaining. Uh, is in the rear of the site, so, you know, their goal when they approve a project is to have us limit our encroachments into those areas which they consider most critical. So, you know, if we pitch something to them, they're asking us the alternate question, which is, you know, why are you proposing to disturb more of a wetland when you don't need to? Um, and, you know, we're we're probably less likely to get relief from that, you know, um, than we would the alternative. Um, plus again, I, you know, I, I mean, in our current plan, I would say that the the driveway is about twenty-five feet from the from the front property line, um, and we still have a need to put a stormwater system in there because we have runoff flowing in that direction. So you know, unless we make a pretty substantial shift back um to the point that I would say we'd almost be disturbing the entire lot. Um, I don't know that we could get far enough back to create enough space for, you know, for the stormwater system to be otherwise accommodated.
Okay, well, um, yeah, I know, I guess there's competing interests, but I just wanted to ask that. Um, I guess the other question related to like landscape is um the use of uh grass lawn as opposed to uh native and adaptive plants um to reduce the need for irrigation pesticide. I mean, can you speak to how the the property will be landscaped in terms of?
Sure. And and I I I think in this application, I think that, you know, the lawn really is minimized and and, you know, perhaps the the backyard that you see here in this light, you know, green really isn't representative of what you're gonna see. Because, you know, this open area in the rear of these homes is the wetland, which is, you know, wooded, and it's gonna remain wooded. We can't touch it. Um, you know, the lawn areas are essentially these, you know, somewhat minimal areas between the homes. Uh, you know, a little bit in front of the property and then, you know, in between the trees, you know, o- on the frontage. Um, you know, because we're keeping such a tight limit of disturbance, um, you know, you, the, you know, the, I I would say, you know, there really isn't much opportunity to further reduce, um, you know, the limits uh of the lawns. Um, you know, the, as I say, the originally, the the lots are about twenty-four thousand square feet in size. And other than the one lot where we're putting the basin, you can see we're we're basically only touching about half of it. So you know, you have twelve thousand square feet with a, you know, twenty-something hundred square foot footprint home, you know, that are fifteen hundred square feet in pavement and stormwater. You you know, there there really wasn't, you know, you're only looking at, I don't know, maybe, you know, five or six thousand square feet tops of lawn area, you know, which is kind of, you know, really minimalistic, you know, so when I, when you consider that surrounding the whole home and between the street.
Right, right. And on a related uh note, uh, I guess it's PC was recommending that um instead of having one large bio retention area that um green infrastructure be used uh throughout the property. And I was wondering if it, if that was something that would be considered or was considered and or would be considered, uh, you know, especially you know, um, you know, having rain gardens. I know, I know that there's some stormwater management in the front. Um, I don't know i- if that's going to be, I I think you said that there was some sort of basin or um I guess down or underground detention. Is that correct?
Or Under the driveways, correct. Yep.
Under the driveway. And but I I mean, are there any rain gardens planned throughout um the the site?
We had not. And and again, you know, with the amount of volume we're talking about and and to try and further break this up, I mean, it it's again, gonna have that other effect that we don't want, which is you know, the more features we add, the more area at this point that we have to disturb. Um, you know, the reason we went with the underground system was if I tried to put more above ground features, you know, it's it's more grading I need to accommodate the slopes. Uh, and therefore, you know, more land that we're gonna have to disturb to accommodate it. You know, putting underground in the area was our attempt to try and really minimize, um, you know, our footprint of what we had to disturb. Um, you know, we, as much as we're trying to respect the need to minimize disturbance with the wetland, you know, we also wanted to make sure that there was at least some area on the property that didn't have features on it that a homeowner could enjoy, you know, as part of having a home uh and and some, you know, some space to actually have a yard. Um, it's really quite minimal in general, um, you know, based on, you know, where we're having this uh, you know, the wetland restriction line. Um, but, you know, we we really didn't want to sacrifice anymore and what we thought was already, you know, pretty small.
Right, right. And 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 on a, I guess, I think it was a final note. Um, it it wasn't clear whether the um driveway would be porous. I mean, so how how is water getting into the the base, the the basin under the driveway? So is it um or stored under the driveway? Is it, is there inlets or is there porous asphalt that, you know, water can?
Uh, it was gonna be done through inlets.
Okay.
So we had, you know, we have some drain, you know, uh on the sides of the pavement, and then we had some lawn inlets as well to collect uh collect the water.
Okay. All right, um, I think that's it for um landscaping and engineering. I I don't know. I don't want to dominate the the questions too much, but I do
Well, actually, Zenon, what I was gonna s- I'm sorry to interrupt, but I was gonna suggest is we are asking um our professionals to go through their memo.
Yeah.
Um, maybe, maybe some of the questions that were raised at PEC uh might uh come up in that context as well and might be addressed um. Uh, it it
Sure.
You know, as we hear from Jim and Joe Scoopian and and others about, because I I know this we'll, we'll, we're gonna be revisiting stormwater. Um, when we hear from Jim and and them too, were you gonna ask about energy and solar and
Yeah, I was gonna ask like the standard, um, you know, questions in terms of sustainability in the building. So I know like the staff would be addressing that, but um
No, go ahead.
I mean, I guess i- i- is it a right to address the the architect at this point?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, well, so I'll I'll try to be quick. I I maybe I'll group it into the kind of a number of questions. So um I guess the first question is whether or not the buildings would be gas or electric, electric in terms of heating and uh, you know, cooking and and whatnot. Um, whether the houses would be um or, you know, how efficient the houses are, and and there was a recommendation to build them to passive house standard, which is the kind of the the gold standard for energy efficiency. Um, I guess what other, uh, yeah, the question about solar ready, the roofs being solar ready and the garages, whether they have um eaten the wire for EV charging, so whether they have level two capacity. I think those are the kind of the architectural questions in terms of sustainability.
Okay, well, we we really haven't gotten into mechanical systems at this point. We're really kind of in a schematic phase here. But certainly, it would be, the houses would be built to comply with the energy codes and that that means very well insulated these days, R forty-nine in the roof. And uh so there there will be, there will be tight envelopes, that's for certain. Um, and the roofs will certainly be capable of supporting the solar installation if uh that was to be incorporated.
What's up, but uh solar, so I mean, I would say that the the codes aren't really all that great because the the state codes are based off of kind of outdated the energy codes. Um, so I mean, I I think that there's there's certainly room for improvement from the the standard code. And 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 so when I, when we say solar ready, that that is kind of like a set standard in terms of like making sure that there's you know, pre-wiring conduit and whatnot. Um, so there's a solar, solar ready standard, that's what we're
Yeah, ha- haven't really gotten into those kind of level of details at this point. Um, certainly
What about um heating, so nothing, you haven't figured out what what um the heating? Uh, whether it be uh natural gas or electric?
There is gas available, so I would expect that there would be, you know, gas heating and electric cooling. That would be my guess.
Um, well, and these, I I'm sorry to miss, interrupt Mr. Ward. These might be questions um Zenon for for Mr. Raben, who will you know, decide what kind of heating system goes in the house and decide what kind of uh you know, conduit is put in, et cetera. I'm not, I'm not trying to deliver a smackdown at all, Mr. Ward. I'm just saying that in terms of being the the decision maker from the developer's perspective. And Mr. Raben, um, you you could, you could a- address these questions now or later, after you've had a chance to think about it for a minute, but um, but am I right in in uh assuming that, you know, you would decide whether you have uh gas furnaces or heat pump systems, or whether you'd put in uh, you know, EV ready uh conduit and that kind of thing?
Yeah, and I, and I would like um Mr. Lyons also to address this, but it generally speaking, you know, we're gonna be we're gonna be making a a state-of-the-art, energy-efficient home. Uh, you know, we want to encourage folks. A- and I'm gonna let Mike speak to the specs that we call out in terms of energy efficiency and insulation, but but, but you know, we heard the solar ready, uh, we heard the the request for for solar panels on these homes, and certainly that would be the, would be the goal from my perspective, would be to create homes that were capable of of uh, you know, being self-sufficient and off the grid. Uh, I don't know that that the market demands those, but uh Mi- Mike, why don't I let you talk about our, you know, compliance with green requirements?
Yes, hi, everyone. Um, I've been building in Princeton for close thirty-five, forty years. I don't know if anybody knows on Pretty Brook Road. It's called Crater Rock Developers Development. That was my partner and myself, we built that. Uh, along with the largest residential home that's in Princeton, and that's on Cherry Valley Road. That's thirty thousand square feet. That house is all geothermal or radiant heated floors. These houses, uh, what we're getting into nowadays is we find that the the electrical heat pump systems are extremely economical. Uh, they've just really raised the prices on them over top of your gas-fired units. Um, as far as the insulation, we use a solid, you know, foam uh on our roof lines and in between our floors. It's really not necessary on the outer walls. We just use our regular insulation on that. And most of our walls are always two by six, so we can accommodate today's codes and actually put like an R twenty-one or nineteen in the walls. So uh it, the house would be a very tight house and would be also pretty much an economical house to run with either system we decide to put in either the uh gas-type systems or, you know, the electrical type system we put in now with the heat pumps. And like I said, my house is is all heat pumps in my house. My house is all electric. I just did all my solar on my garage, and I run about thirty thousand kilowatts a year. And my average electric bill is about a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. So we're we're gearing towards that. I built, I built the house um in Princeton. That was a LEED-certified home. And that was a little, that was a very expensive house to build. I learned my lesson on that one. I'm not gonna build LEEDs again. But uh the industry standards, when we build usually, or in the Princeton area, we're usually a cut above. We don't we don't go to the Indy or the code standards to what they're building at right now because of what people require and what they want in in the town.
Yeah, and people do are gravitating more and more toward these, toward heat pump systems and all electric and, you know, knowing that they wanna shrink the carbon footprint and all of that. So I hope that that's something that will help drive your marketing and you know. Uh, Mr. Texarney, did you have any other questions? I'm trying to be a little bit mindful of getting to our um our uh professionals, our own professionals, unless um, Mr. Crumholtz, you have any more witnesses?
Oh, that, that was it. Like, all all four of us or or five of us are here to answer any questions your professionals have and then members of the public. And obviously, the board as well.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, um uh Jim Purcell, are you? Um
I'm here.
Okay, great. Um, it's Leslie. Let's, let's uh ask the applicant to stop sharing their screen so that others have an opportunity to do that. Um, can you take us through uh through your memo, um, Mr. Purcell? And uh after you're sworn in, thank you for doing that. It helps remind me. And uh and the concerns, any concerns you have and the very, or the um conditions that you recommend. Mr. Mueller, go ahead.
Jim, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Just sworn or affirmed?
Um, first of all, let me uh start by explaining that, as you probably noticed in my memo, I I identified, you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I have new headphones and I can't hear myself because they're so tight on my ears. Um, the um, my memo mentions that the uh the development actually qualifies under RSIS in terms of stormwater management. And as you uh, as the planning board is aware, RSIS um uh overrides sort of our more stringent uh stormwater management regulations. Uh, however, um, and I'm gonna ask Joe Scoopian to uh chime in on this as well. The applicant actually did attempt to design their stormwater management in accordance with our um stormwater management ordinance, hence um, Mr. Scoopian's uh review is based on our own ordinance. And um, uh, as we all know, the RSIS is quite outdated. And the Residential Site Improvement Board is actually considering this year to uh remove the linkage to the uh outdated language that they have placed in the RSIS. Um, so uh from our perspective, uh uh, and I think if you'll, if uh Mr. Scoopian will uh testify that um, they have not met the requirements, and they have not met the requirements under RSIS at this time either. Um, I know Mr. Scoopian's been speaking with uh the engineers at ELNP and discussing ways that they can modify their drainage design system in order to uh get them there. Um, I'll leave stormwater management for now. Uh, I do have some concerns, um, as you um, know, you might note in my memo. Um, we have some general comments. Um, first of all, uh, I think that the uh planning board needs to consider uh the requests for waivers that they've asked for. We've testified, uh, we've provided that um, most of those waivers are de minimis or or not applicable so that they can be granted. Um, I did want to hear more testimony regarding the exceptions in order for the application to be deemed complete. Um, but that's up to the planning board to determine. Um, I have a very serious concern about some of the reports that were submitted. Um, the narrative, the fire protection narrative, the green development information statement, the environmental information statement um are identical to ones that were submitted earlier. And uh, um, they were prepared by a different engineering firm. So I was hoping to hear testimony this evening uh about that discrepancy, whether or not the applicant uh continues a relationship with uh Princeton Junction Engineering, or whether or not the all of that professional work has been turned over to um ELNP. Um, that is a professional courtesy that typically takes place with professional engineering firms. Um, but I see no evidence that any of that has happened. Um, we also have a serious concern about full basements. Um, this is uh obviously, as you can tell, it's a low area. Um, the wetlands are in extremely close proximity to the homes. And we anticipate that uh those basements will um be wet and will require some pumps. Um, and I am concerned about those some pumps that will have to go through the drainage system and whether or not the drainage system is designed uh to handle that, meaning the bio-retention basin. Um, there's no indication on the plans as to where those some pumps would discharge, whether it's into the wetlands, out onto the street, or through the drainage system, but the uh proper way to do it would be to put it through the detention basin. Um, the, there were other concerns uh that I did see in the presentation that were addressed, and that had to do with the amount of impervious uh surfaces by uh um adjusting the garage uh layout. Um, that was a suggestion that we also had um to reduce the turnaround area and minimize the asphalt that's going in. We also recommended that the driveway be narrowed, and I see that they have done that as well. Um, and also relocating the driveway further to the south. Um, um, not so concerned about the proximity to the um, the adjoining driveway. That's not an unusual thing, as long as they're meeting the code of uh having it the sufficient distance from the property line. The adjoining driveway, that's not an unusual thing, as long as they're meeting the code of, uh, having it the sufficient distance from the property line. Um, but that was in order to save one of the rather large oak trees that, uh, join Route two oh six there. And I think that is in general, the more technical side of things, we did have comments and Dan Dobramilsky has comments regarding the landscaping.
Jim, could you just talk a little bit about McMahon's report, the traffic and. You know, some of their concerns about vehicle turnarounds and stuff like that, do you?
I did, I did have a discussion with Dan McGinnis and, and, uh. It it, I I would agree with the applicant that if a fire truck, if there was a fire, the fire truck would probably. Use the most expeditious, uh, route and stop at Route two oh six and, uh, attempt to put fires out there, so. Um, Dan and I, uh, I think Dan agreed in our discussions after I saw his memo that. Um, that is not a large concern, we still would like to see whether or not, um, uh. A, a, a single unit vehicle, uh, could could maneuver the driveway as designed. Um, mostly for moving van purposes and for ambulances, but. Um, not so concerned about the larger vehicles, um, needing to access these three homes. But Dan, is that, would you agree with that? And Daniel, have to get sworn in before you say even yes.
Dan, if you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Just one or firm.
Yes, of the, um. I I I certainly agree that, you know, the the, it makes sense, the fire trucks can access the site via Route two oh six. You know, it it, the the possibility of using some sort of previous material to help accommodate box trucks or perhaps a fire truck. Um, I guess that's something that could be explored as well. Um, and also our comment about the, uh, the driveway with, um. We we can retract that too, in in consideration of the stormwater needs of the site and and also, you know, while it might be. You know, desirable to be able to pass two vehicles side by side, given the. It's just three, three dwellings and, uh, that, uh. Beagles passing would be relatively rare, and we're happy to retract that that comment as well.
Thanks.
Jim, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
What I'm not clear about. I'm cr- crystal clear that stormwater management and drainage is a critical issue here. What I don't completely understand is the importance of the quote bioretention basin. How complicated is it? And in particular, what does it mean? Who manages it? What is the challenge to manage a bioretention basis? What is its role? How important is it?
Well, a a bioretention basin's, uh, uh, role is to actually, uh, retain, um. A a certain amount of water on site. Um, and at the same time detaining a certain amount of water on site. And the bioretention portion of it is a filtration system that, uh, adjusts the water quality as well. Um, the maintenance of it is a critical piece, a maintenance manual is required and annual maintenance has to be. Um, and periodic maintenance, but mostly a- annual maintenance to to ensure that it continues to function. Um, one of our concerns is because the site is so wet. Um, we're, we're, we are concerned about whether or not the bioretention basin as designed will function. Again, uh, heard no testimony regarding that this evening. Um, and again, Mr. Scoopian is our stormwater management consultant. Um, and perhaps he has some more to add regarding that. Joe?
Yeah, good evening, folks.
Swear in, swear in.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So it's one or firm.
Uh, Joseph J. Scoopian, I think that's what you asked, sir?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, okay, it's hard to hear, um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's not your fault, it's at my end, um. Mr. Chow, you have a question about the bioretention basin, um, if you're familiar with. The tried and true long in the tooth detention basin. Where we bring water in at a rate faster than it could go out, it stores temporarily and then kind of. Goes out at a lower rate, kind of like a traffic light on a highway. Well, bioretention is the bioretention basin that's proposed, the bioretention part is really for treating stormwater quality or providing stormwater quality. For the small, roughly one year storm, it's about, it's an inch and a quarter of rain. Uh, and it's about, has a probability of occurring about once a year, so all the rains up to the runoff from all the rains up to that. Need to be treated for water quality. And the way the bioretention basin does that is if you can think about, if you're familiar with water treatment, the old sand filter. It would bring water into a, into a basin into and then let the water filter through sand. Which would remove some of the particulate matter and then you'd have cleaner water coming out the bottom. Bioretention is a improvement, let's say, on that, where the the sand is replaced with soil. Okay, with a lot of organic material and then there's vegetation growing on in the soil. So that we not only get physical filtering like a sand filter we do, but we get biological treatment as well. Either uptake of nutrients or or binding of some of the heavy metals, binding of some of the hydrocarbons. So it is a water quality measure, the water comes in. The only way out for the water to to get out from the basin is to go through downward vertically through the soil bed. And then in this case infiltrate into the natural soil under that bed. Uh, the other way to do a bioretention basin on areas that the natural soil won't allow the water to infiltrate. Is to put an underdrain system, so the water still gets the the runoff, still gets the benefit of the treatment. Filtering through the vegetation, the root zone, the soil bed, but then it's captured in an underdrain system and piped away. In this case, they're going to, they're saying they would like to rely on the natural infiltration ability of the soil. And as Jim mentioned, we have a little concern about that, the soil testing for that specific portion of the project site. Shows that the soil does have, the natural soil has. An a good enough permeability rate to accept the runoff that's being. Filtered vertically down through the vegetation and the soil bed. But not far away is a wetland, which has very, very low permeability, so. Before we want to rely on that infiltration. Of the water, of the stormwater quality storm runoff coming through this, the artificial soil bed and vegetation. We want to make sure that's going to work, but that's the bioretention. For the larger storm events, what we would call the ordinance calls, the quantity control storms. Those are the bigger, less frequent storms, although frankly lately seems to be a lot more frequent. There we do rely on the tried and true detention idea of for the much larger storm, they happen less frequently. So the the, there's not much additional benefit to be gained to be providing treatment for all that runoff. The early, the the inch and a quarter portion of the big five or eight inch rain will of course be treated. But there's just, it just doesn't make sense from an engineering or a economic or an environmental standpoint. To treat all that runoff because it only happened very, very infrequently, water quality damage comes from the frequent rains, so. The larger storms, some of it will go down vertically through the bed and either infiltrate into the ground or picked up by an underdrain. The larger storms would act like a detention basin. They would have an outlet structure with different sized orifices and weirs that would let the water out at a at a required rate.
And can a homeowner association of three members easily, efficiently manage the process you've just described?
Hmm. We're having a discussion today about home homeowners not knowing they have septic systems, anyway. Yeah, typically what happens and it typically happens in a maintenance situation, there's a lot of possibilities. A lot of maintenance, as you know, even your own, even a lot of people's, just their lawn maintenance is done by contractors. So, yeah, the the maintenance, it it, this small of a site, homeowner association is 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 still doable. And as long as the contractor, if they, if the contract, if it is contracted, there are firms that know how to take care of these. So, yes, the maintenance is definitely a concern. Um, these, the particularly any of the filtration type BMPs, sand filters, bioretention basins, infiltration bases. As you know yourself, a filter is much more prone to clogging, much more prone to problems. Then a a, you know, something that you're more likely to clog the air filter on the engine, on your car's engine. Then you will clog the fuel intake into the gas tank, it it, it's just the nature of the bee, so. These are more maintenance sensitive, but, you know, I I will need to address that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Um, I see that Mia has her hand raised and then Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, so Jim, just to to cut to the chase here, uh. Are you, um, and and let me just preface this by saying that I spent a good part of the day meeting with, uh, local residents who are. Um, experiencing. Uh, increased flooding problems in their houses and in their yards because of new construction near to their homes, so. Um, I am, have that very much in mind as I'm asking this question and I'm wondering, Jim, um, if. Is, is there more that the applicant can do? Or is, has the applicant essentially done the maximum and the problem is that? Is is that the site is, um. Is it is really not, there's not that much more that can be done, um, in terms of stormwater management on this site.
Jim, I can help with that if you'd like.
Yeah, I, I, I was going to say that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question right now, let me answer it this way, we don't know if they've done enough. Okay, that that's part of the problem, if you've gone, i- if you've had the pleasure of reading my report. Um, in that we found some problems in the design and the reports and the plans that need to be addressed. Before we can say that, yes, they have met your stormwater management requirements. So I could go into the details of that, it it is laid out in my report, if you'd like, I'd be glad to. But there's some deficiencies, let's call it, and some and some calculation errors in the report. That I can't work around, so we need to get those addressed before we can say that. Yes, what they've done meets your requirements, can they do, so then that would be the logical starting point for can they do more? Or whatever, so right now I can't say for sure right now that they've met your requirements.
So why, why is the application here then if we, if we don't know yet?
Jim, that one's yours.
I don't have the authority not to not schedule something, that is not my call. Um, I I I would like to add on to what Joe just said, though, is that, um. There, there are some discrepancies in the underlying survey, there is a drainage swell in the back. Of this property that was not clearly shown on the topography. Um, and that drainage swell collects a significant amount of offsite drainage. Um, coming down from, from uphill. Um, and the wetlands themselves are also a sponge for some of that offsite drainage and. And we're not, we're not sure what's going to happen once a, uh, a bioretention basin that is, that is, uh. Enclosed in and basically fill in an embankment. That's going to block the natural drainage flow, um, of this swell along with, uh, any other natural flow, but. Um, uh, Joe, I I think you probably agree with me that, uh, that that's not going to exacerbate any flooding on anybody upstream. Um, it it's going to cause, it might cause additional flooding in the backyards of these three proposed homes. Uh, and may exacerbate the problems that I anticipate in the, in the basements in terms of. Uh, inflow from groundwater.
Yeah, well, again, I'm, I'm not prepared to say whether anything's going to impact anything because I simply don't know. The basic problem in the, in the report was, um, there is, is the, what is the existing runoff right now? To the, to the back of the property where it leaves their site and goes on to downstream properties. And the total amount of runoff to that point wasn't fully analyzed. And so it would be like you're trying to analyze the traffic impacts of this site on traffic on Route two oh six. But you haven't looked at the offsite traffic on Route two oh six, you've only looked at your own. And we need to look at all of the runoff to their point of discharge in the rear and they didn't, they didn't take a look at the offsite runoff that gets there. Also, I don't think they did a very, they didn't do an accurate enough job of analyzing. The effects of the wetland that's back there and its effect on reducing or or. Having an effect on the amount of runoff to the back of their site. And then there's also the, the problem of the grading of the new basin is going to basically isolate that wetland. And so any offsite runoff that gets to it won't be able to get out like it does now. So there's some fundamental issues. And it, once, when you do any kind of stormwater review, every review is based upon what's happening now. And then you can go from there because that's what all your requirements are based on. What's happening now, don't make it worse or make it better. And if we don't know what's happening now, we can't go much further and and that's where my, most of my questions are, is you have not determined. And enough of, you haven't determined accurately enough what's happening now. So that's why, Jim, I I can't say that what's going to happen in the future is going to be better or worse, we need to find out what's happening now, right? You know, before we can go further, there's also some other issues and if, again, if you want, they're in my report, I'll be glad to go through them.
Um, say that I'm really sympathetic, Mr. Ivan, about, you know, wanting to, um. Complete your project for your father, but I I I don't, you know. It's very hard to ask the board to, uh, move forward on something where there are so many outstanding questions. I I think just on 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 what we've just heard right now, it seems like your work is not completed. And that's, that's really unfortunate.
So this is, I don't know if you can hear me and I missed some of that.
We can hear you, Mr. Robin.
Am I permitted to speak at this juncture?
Yes, you may.
I I just, I would like Wayne to to step in here, but I thought I heard, uh, you know, Mr. Scoopian say he doesn't know. Um, because he ha- he doesn't have the information regarding what's happening now. And I'm not sure that frankly, that addresses the adequacy of the current plan. But, uh, and I I thought I heard, uh, Mr. Ingram say that the plan that we've submitted. Must guarantee that the structures and the impervious, um, surfaces that we build. Must guarantee that what we're building doesn't create more offsite drainage than what is currently.
Um, Mr. Raven is frozen.
I'm happy to have Mr. Scoopian's approvals, questions, answers. Apologize, the internet connection is a little unstable here.
Oh, that's okay, I I do want to ask Mr. Ingram if you, uh, can respond to, uh. Some or all of the issues and concerns that have been raised by Mr. Purcell. And Mr. Scoopian, I also want to point out that. We originally had this scheduled in January and it was put off until February in order to get extra information, I thought, and so. I I'm, uh, completely, um. I feel you, Mia, when you say, yeah, well, why, why are we here? There's still so much yet that we still don't know and what, you know, because nobody wants to, um, waste a whole bunch of time, but. So I I am, um, I would really like to hear Mr. Ingram, not just about the. Uh, the questions about, um. Uh, there, whatever answers you have to questions about, um, data and numbers and whatnot, but also. Whether or not you, um, prepared a separate, um, set of reports or whether. That the the very first thing that Mr. Purcell mentioned was discomfort with some of the reports that were submitted that were exactly the same as. Previous ones and and therefore, um. Um, you know, raised.
And and not prepared.
Concerns and suspicion on his path and not for, and and presumably prepared by a different engineering firm, can you address that too?
So, uh, you know, we did not make an attempt to update the work of the, you know, the prior professionals in which we were not aware that there were. You know, significant concerns for the conclusions that they raised, I mean, we, we reviewed the reports, you know, for their content and, you know, so much as. You know, the board requests, you know, addendums be issued to address any changes that, you know, are inconsistent from those prior reports. I mean, we could, you know, we could provide that information. I mean, we could, you know, we could provide that information, um, you know, as much as necessary. With regard to.
Before you go on, Wayne, sorry, I, I paid Princeton Junction Engineering for the work that they did. And we needed, we needed Wayne and EPL to come in and, and get this, this project. Teed up and before this board. So that was a decision that I made and there's no, there's no issue with Princeton Junction Engineering's work. You know, not being, uh, paid for and, and, uh, you know, and. And owned by me, I think is, is the right way to say it.
Oh, yeah, I did. I certainly didn't mean to get into payment or ownership. My concern, uh, and I may have misinterpreted Mr. Purcell. But I thought that his concern was that, uh, that the report was sort of phoned in and that it did not address, um. Issues specific to this site, but Jim, if I'm misrepresenting or if I'm misunderstood, please correct me.
Uh, no, Madam Chair, you understand me, uh, perfectly. The, the reports are older and I didn't know whether or not there were any. Um, because there, there was nothing addressed. I didn't bother to check to see if there are things that should be changed in those reports. Um, but also there's an ethical, uh, issue here, uh, as a licensed professional engineer. Um, to rely on, uh, other professionals', uh, work. EL and P should, uh, should consult with the prior professional to make sure that they're okay with them taking over. Uh, any of the prior work. Um, that's.
I, I just wanted to say to be clear, we didn't, you know, I have not certified in any way to their work, so there's no ethical issue. Cuz I have not taken any ownership of their work.
So the fire, the fire, excuse me, Wayne, the fire protection narrative, which goes to the fire protection plan. You're not taking any responsibility for anything in the fire protection narrative. Which has to do with fight, with the location of fire hydrants, the, the, the size of pipes. And, and.
Their work is professionally signed and we rely on it just as, you know, if there were sub consultants on any other project, signs and certifies their work. I mean, we're assuming that the work that they have provided is accurate, but. Uh, so the work. Provide our own fire protection plan within our plan set of things that we personally verify.
So the, the, the work that you've done to update the site plan had no impact on the environmental information statement? Or the new architect that's on about the green development information statements? I, I don't know. Um, there's, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm at a loss with this one. That's all. I'm not used to seeing, um, documents presented in an application that are so far apart in time. And, um, and done by different professionals. So. Um, there's just, I just was asking for them to provide testimony as to, uh, the continued. Uh, applicability and, uh, and whether or not, uh. Uh, the, uh, prior professional is aware that their work is being, uh, used at this time. That's my concern. That's just one, I mean, but, but we were really talking about stormwater management, weren't we?
Sure. And, and to address, you know, those concerns, um, I mean, you know, I, I've had a chance to read through the comments, you know, unfortunately with. By the time you get a report and when you're scheduled for things, there, there isn't sufficient time to do all the work that's necessary to address the comments. However, you know, we did review the comments, you know, unfortunately, they're also based on, you know, the earlier version before we made these attempts to. To reduce our impervious even further. Um, but, you know, in reviewing them, um, you know, there's nothing that we're not intending to. Comply with, you know, we'll, you know, if additional information is requested or additional analysis to prove what we've shown here. More than happy to provide it, you know, art. And, you know, what I was trying to say with my testimony is that, you know, regardless of. You know, any concerns that are raised, um, you know, there's, there's always with, with an approval, there's a, you know, a set of compliance plans that have to be. Prepared to make everyone who's reviewing this project happy and content that we have done what we say we will do. And that is something that's gonna have to be done regardless for the site. So, you know, our intention is to remedy all of those comments and provide. Additional information to any extent required to, to make your professionals, you know, could, you know, concurrent its finality that the, that the plans meet the requirements. And there is indeed the reductions that we're, you know, we're specifying.
Uh, Madam Chair, if I may, um, our dilemma here is because of the lack of information on what exists today. And whether or not the, the system is designed or even any system that may be designed can comply with the regulations. We, we, we are unsure and in, in the case that they can't. Then variances would be required and they would have to appear before the site plan, the, the planning board again. In order to request those variances from the regulations. Um, we just don't have sufficient information to make that determination at this time.
Okay, um, thanks for that, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, you know, I know that this board has seen other applications come before us. Where the stormwater management system was not complete. Uh, at the time that we were reviewing, but our professionals were able to sort of reassure us. That there were details that needed to be worked through, but they would be able to be worked through. And I think what's different about this application. What I just heard Mr. Purcell say is that there's not a level of confidence, given the available information. That the details will be able to be worked out.
I, that's what I heard too. Um, thanks, David, for saying it so succinctly. Are there, is there anything else, Mr. Purcell or Mr. Scoopian that you wanna add from either of your? Memos? And I know, Mr. Purcell, yours was dated December seventeenth. I did not look at the date on Mr. Scoopian's, um, and I know the plans have changed. Since then, um.
I, I, Madam Chair, I issued a supplemental memo.
Oh, okay.
After a, a resubmission showing the, uh, um, changes in the driveway, uh, alignment and, and size and.
Okay.
But the supplemental memo referred back to this in terms of all of these other issues.
I'm sorry, is the supplemental memo not a part of the documents that we have uploaded?
Oh, it is.
Okay.
I, um, that was probably my mistake. I thought I had, okay, good.
It's dated, it's dated January sixth.
Okay, good.
And it is part of what's uploaded.
Good. Um, are there other questions from? Or I guess I'll finish my question, Mr. Purcell or, or Mr. Scoopian, do you have anything else that you wanna add? Um, and, uh, bring to the board's attention?
Without going into detail, thank you, Mr. Cohen. That's basically the bottom line of the report.
Uh, Madam Chairman, could I? Be heard on this?
Yes, we still have a couple of other, um, professionals, uh, that we'll hear from on our end, but go, but go ahead, Mr. Rabin.
Well, I just, I wanted to, I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Scoopian and Mr. Purcell. I, I think what I've heard was that they can't tell because they don't know about existing conditions. Whether the stormwater drainage proposal is adequate. And so. Obviously, I'm a proponent of the applicant, of the application. I, I would like to offer for consideration that if they are. Uh, satisfied through Mr. Ingram's supplement to his report, that that would be a condition, uh. You, you know, to the project, uh, proceeding. Because if they were saying that what they know means it can't be done. Then I wouldn't be making this comment, but they're saying they don't know and they wanna be convinced that the, the, the plan is adequate. And so I would like to just offer that it could be a condition of the project proceeding.
Uh, well, I think Mr. Cohen, uh, just made a, um, coherent argument, um. Against that approach, but, but the board will discuss it.
Madam, Madam Chair, I'd like to add one more piece to that.
Yeah.
We, we are, uh, the, the municipality of Princeton is a, an MS four. Um, permit holder, which means that the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. Oversees us in terms of our municipal stormwater sewer system. And a few years ago, they audited us. And they found that the actions of this planning board were in violation of the NJDEP regulations in that. We were, that this planning board was, um, providing approvals prior to. Um, the, a, a complete stormwater management report being prepared. So, uh, this one rises to that level where I'd have to advise you that we would be. Again, subject to, uh, a, a. A bad audit, I, I guess is the best way to say it, from the NJDEP. And, uh, the, that threatens our ability to have a municipal stormwater sewer system.
Yes, uh, say no more. That is not a place that we want to be. Um, but thank you very much for, um. Putting your cards on the table. I think it's very important for people to know. Mr. Muller, did you have something quick before I go?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Jim, when, when was that again, Jim? When, when was the audit?
The audit was performed in two thousand eighteen and the re-audit report was January two thousand nineteen.
Thank you.
I can provide the, the planning board with a copy of that.
Madam Chair. That would be good. I, I don't, I don't think that any of us, uh, was aware of that. Um, Ms. Philip, did you have something quick?
Yeah, Ms. Sacks has her hand up.
Yes, uh, Councilwoman Sacks, go right ahead.
I'm just wondering, uh, Jerry is, would do, what is the protocol? I, I don't see how we can proceed with the application at this point. Do we wanna ask the applicant if he would, he would like to, um, come back at it? Another point, I mean, I just don't know how we can proceed. I, and I don't know, Madam Chair, if you think it, there's any point to. Hearing what else they have to say, but I, I mean, I, I just don't see how we can move forward on this.
Yeah, we, we certainly, we could, one of the alternatives and the most obvious one is to ask him to come back. To submit, um, up to date reports, um, to answer the questions the staff has and to consult with them about it. So the staff is happy with the, satisfied with the information it has. Now, I, I don't know when the, um, municipal annuals law clock runs. When, when does it run, Carrie?
It was extended to, um, tomorrow. The, the original deadline was the sixteenth of January and it was extended to February eighteenth.
Yeah, we, we would have no problem extending that further.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I, I think that's the way to go. I mean, it's, it's clear that, uh, a number of members of the board and staff think that. We just don't have sufficient information to make a, a reason.
I certainly agree with that. I, I did think that since we've had our traffic consultant here all evening, we might. Um, hear that report so that he doesn't have to come back and spend another few hours. Uh, before we get to him. Uh, does that sound okay to, to folks?
Yeah.
I thought he already, um, pretty much went through his.
Oh, did he go all the way through it? I thought he was just addressing a question. Okay. Well, I, I have, what, Mr. McGinnis, do you have anything to add to what you said earlier?
Sure, yeah, the, the, most of the comments were, were addressed already, but just, um. A few comments worth, worth bringing up. And then the applicant plans to apply for an access permit, we would request that. The municipality be, be kept apprised of, of that process, copied on correspondence. And then I believe. Yeah, the, the other comments were, were minor about creeping pardon along the access drive aisle and, uh. Correcting the grading of the profile, uh, where it meets the, where it meets Route two oh six, so it reflects the sidewalk grade. That's it for my, my report.
Did you, you have a concern at all about left turn movements out of that driveway? I realize it's probably a DOT call, but with that turning lane right there and Lee Avenue and Birch and two oh six. I mean, that is a, uh. Tricky spot. And I'm just wondering what your, what your thoughts are about right out, you know, uh, left turn restriction. Uh, something like that. I mean, is that something that in your view, the board should, should weigh in on or is DOT not gonna pay any attention? To what we say one way or the other?
It's, I mean, you're certainly right. It's, it's, it's ultimately up to NJDOT when they're reviewing the access permit application. And I, and I realize that the, the driveway has been shifted to save a large tree. But you, you're correct that, that, that new position near the lot line brings it close to the adjacent intersection and. Increases the, you know, potential conflict between turning movements from the opposing. From that adjacent intersection, but it, it's pretty, the traffic coming out of this driveway is obviously very minor. So I guess I would recommend just leaving those, uh, considerations to, up to New Jersey DOT.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sorry, please go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, I don't think that the driveway moving ten feet, I mean, the fact that it gets a little closer to Lee Avenue. To me, doesn't make it that much less tricky. It's, it's, um. It, it's a, it's a very challenging spot for a driveway, no matter, you know, whether it's ten or twenty feet north. Or whether, whether it is, I wouldn't wanna cut down a gigantic tree, uh. I, in, in order to make it, you know, two percent better, uh, I, I don't know. Uh, we're probably not gonna have to make that call ourselves anyway. Mr. Muller?
It, ju- just a question for Dan. It, it had been my, um, impression from some other applications in the town. That DOT looks with extreme disfavor upon left-hand turns out of the property that crosses a, um, a turning lane. Uh, have you had any experience with that?
Yeah, that's, that's typically true. I mean, that normally you're right, if there's a full movement driveway along a turn lane. He would at least have to request a waiver from the department. Not be the case. The, given that this is a two-way turn lane, I'll note that mitigates things somewhat.
And, and Dan, this is, this is a center lane dual turn lane. I mean, it's, it's not like they're cutting across a right turn lane. They're, in order to make the left turn, they're, they're going across the, the through traffic lane. Into a turn lane that's there for that specific purpose. I, I would point out that there is an existing driveway. Uh, first of all, on this site, and then there's the adjoining driveway. And if we have a concern about this driveway. We should be concerned about the other driveway. I, I'm sorry, Dan, I, I don't think it's our, it's, it's that much of a concern. And in frankly, moving it. An additional ten feet to the south provides even more site distance back to the curve that is of concern. So, um, I, I just don't think it's, it's worthy, uh, of concern. Uh, if DOT has a problem with it, they'll definitely let us know.
Yeah.
I.
Uh, Mr. Quinn, I.
I'd just point out that, that a similar condition at Valley Road, uh. The DOT turned down the municipality's request to allow left-hand turns, um. From Valley Road next to the P Fars building. So. Uh, a different circumstance for sure. It's not a private property and, um. Mr. Purcell's absolutely correct that I imagine that left turns are made. Frequently from the both existing driveways. But again, it's, uh, I wouldn't think that it would be an automatic.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. Um. I would just, uh, a- also flag, uh, for the applicant. The concerns, the many concerns that were raised by, um, Dan Dobromilsky and the Shade Tree. Committee in their, um, memos about compliance with ordinances and, and, um. Tree replacement requirements and maybe those have been addressed, uh, since the first. Um, you know, in, in your revised plan, I'm not sure, but, um, Dan, I see you turned on your camera. Um, welcome here from the Caribbean where. The bar this week. Um, did you wanna weigh in a little bit before we conclude?
If, Dan, if you could.
Oh, yes.
Dan, if you could raise your, just we're from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
I do. Um, yeah, I think there's, just on the topics that you've been talking about tonight, I think there's a few things. Uh, one, I wanted to say that I appreciate the efforts to reduce pavement to possibly. One, I wanted to say that I appreciate the efforts to reduce pavement to possibly save one or two more trees. I haven't seen the revised plans and particularly the grading for this new driveway location to tell you whether that's even possible or not, whether saving the tree is, could occur based upon that. I'm, I'm concerned about that because there will be a lot of fill here in order to make it all work. So but I, I think the testimony was they're going to try to, they weren't saying they could guarantee they would. The one thing I didn't hear in the presentation tonight that I thought the board should be aware of, if you're not, is it looks to me like the wetland buffer line, so not just the wetland line, but the new wetland transition buffer line will be right along the back of these new homes. So basically, the rear yard of these homes, we totally regulate it by NJDEP restrictions, which makes the change in the driveway even that much more important because the side yard is going to be basically their rear yard as far as usability. So they, by moving the driveway and shifting the garage, you've given them a little bit of usable space that they may not have had before. But so if the board wants to hear more testimony about that relative to the stormwater and everything else that you talked about, that might be helpful so that you fully understand what's, what's being requested. I think my comments three, four, and five kind of get into different things with landscape that really are going to be dependent upon what happens with the stormwater. So I think if there are changes to the stormwater, then we can adjust what happens with the landscape. But I also, as I've clearly indicated, I'm very concerned that how is an association of three people going to manage and maintain the landscape here? I think what you're going to see are some of the areas probably becoming more rain garden-like, like the wetlands and things like that, like Mr. Chakjarni had mentioned, that there'll be less lawn and more possibly seeded meadow areas. That'll be more conducive with what the stormwater and the wetland, and the wetland buffers are and how to manage those areas so that they meet those regulations and intent. And we really need to figure out how to carve out some of the areas, small areas, like I said, in the side yard for everyday use, outdoor use of the property owner. So there's some of the things that I think the landscape plans could be revised to address that and some of the buffering comments I made, if you extend this hearing.
So when you say the entire rear yards from the, basically from the foundation on back are regulated by DEP, does that translate to they may not be mowed, they may not be landscaped except as nature intended? I mean, I guess, I guess that's part one of the question. And part two is how exactly, and that may be not this board's jurisdiction, but how exactly does that kind of directive get communicated to the homeowner? I mean, it's one thing to have a deed restriction that says, you know, this is a stormwater easement or what, you know, however, or wetland buffer area. Do you know what homeowners get that says these are the things you may not do because your backyard is regulated by DEP? Is that something the town does or that DEP does or that the developer does or what?
That's all exactly the questions I think that need to be answered and provided. I mean, I, it's my take that it looks like the transition buffer is right up to the back of the house. They need to tell us whether that's accurate or not. And then what that transition, what are the regulations that DEP placed upon that transition with their permit to fill part of the wetlands? And then how exactly, how does that translate into the future owners of that property being informed of that information and fully understanding it? And probably equally as important, who implements the landscape? That is the permanent landscape that they're going to have to maintain. These are three individual lots, depending upon how they're sold, who implements it and when.
So so as to be sure that these questions are addressed before we reconvene and so that we don't sort of run into a buzzsaw again, I guess, Mr. Dobromilsky, you and Mr. Purcell, Mr. Scoopian coordinate with, directly with the applicant or his engineer, and just make sure that all, you know, everybody's at the table that needs to be and all these questions are addressed before we come back.
If I may, you know, certainly one way that the applicant, the, the property owners, the individual owners could be notified of, of what the regulations are. There could be a deed notice, we could require that a deed notice be filed, laying all that out. And we could require an deed from the developer to the owner that the deed notice be referenced. So, or maybe even attached to, to the deed itself. So that, that's one, one way that, that it's going to be right before the, the owner. And assumingly at closing, if not before, they're going to be advised by the attorney handling it that, you know, there are all these provisions that you need to be aware of, plus the homeowner association documents, but how close?
Right, and it should, should be in the homeowner association documents. I mean, I'm not concerned about a three, a three house, a three dwelling homeowner association. I am part of a two household homeowner association and it works fine. I mean, the lines of communication are wide open. It's our neighbors, you know. So I'm not concerned about that, but I just want to make sure that I think small groups can handle this kind of thing well. And you have, that's why you have monthly homeowner association dues to be able to pay for this stuff. But it does have to be clear what's expected of them. That's, that's my.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, exactly.
Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair and/or Jerry. I'm wondering how, if we should proceed or how we would proceed with members of the public who have had their hands raised in the queue for a while. Do we wait until we, the revised application is submitted to hear public comment? I think we should address that for the members of the public who are waiting.
It, it's a good question. Certainly it would be the board's prerogative to say, we're not going to open to the public yet because there's going to be revised plans. Personally, my view is we should let the public be heard, just as a matter of courtesy, because they've been waiting all night. And second, because they might say things which is going to be useful to, to both the, the developer and the staff.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Mr. Quinn. Yeah, yeah, me too. I appreciate the question and the guidance. So let, there are two hands raised. The first is Mr. Ron Chen, the second is Lisa Schur. There's two more now. I, I just want to, and now another, I want to make crystal clear to folks that we are not finishing this tonight. And and that there's work to be done and this won't be your last time, last opportunity to speak on this application. Before the end of the meeting, I hope to continue this hearing to a date certain so that we can announce what exactly that date is. So with that, Carrie, I would ask you to bring over Mr. Chen and Ms. Schur. And we'll hear first from Mr. Chen. And folks, you'll be sworn in by Mr. Muller and then invited to speak for up to three minutes, please.
Yeah. Mr. Chen, if you could, is Mr. Chen going to be testifying or?
I would like to testify first. We're two, two people who want, both want to testify. And I would like to go ahead and I'd also like to share my screen if I can.
Okay, wait, let's ask the chair. Louise, you care about the order?
It's all right with me if you, if you share your screen. I, I would ask you to please limit your comments to three minutes. So if you have a PowerPoint presentation, that's a different thing altogether.
Okay, so if you could, ma'am, if you could raise your right hand, I'm going to
Yes?
If you could raise, raise your right hand, I don't see you.
I, I'm right here.
Okay, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed, could you please say your full name and spell your last name?
I am Sandra Chen, and I live at 51 Wilson Road.
Okay, thank you.
Can you see my slides here?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Okay, let, let, let me ask you, Ms. Chen, there's, how many slides are, are there?
You can see them, five.
No, I mean, just how many slides are?
She says she has five slides.
Five, five, oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Okay.
I am, I am going to interrupt you at, at three minutes. If someone will tell me when three minutes is up, because suddenly I can't see my phone. But please, please go ahead.
Yeah, we'll mark this as exhibit 01.
The red line here shows the project area. The green line shows ours. And we have this interface here. This is interfaces with Lot 44. And I believe historically, the reason 40, Lot 44 is so narrow is this was the trolley line. It goes across this lot and our property. And today, the remnants of that is a large, deep depression. And the land, let me show you here. This is a brief one of the trolley line showing where it crosses our property and the Lot 44. When it rains, the, the land on the, developed, the properties to be developed is graded downward and in extreme forms. And water runs off from the soap, the wetlands above down to this area below and pools, pools there. So this area here is on the developer's property. This is on our property and it's sort of a merged pool. I, we fear that if this development goes forward as planned, we're going to get more rain. First of all, we believe that the wetland delineation on the developer's plan is wrong. That while the up, upper area is delineated as wetlands, that water flows down into this pool. And that's area on Lot 44 is not even indicated as wetlands. We believe this information was taken, the file indicated from a plan that was dated in 2007. Even DEP doesn't say their wetlands delineations are valid for more than five years. We feel like that's been done inappropriately. We're shocked that DEP allows the filling of wetlands and we wonder what conditions there are that they'll have to compensate for that. Last week, the DEP Commissioner testified before a Senate committee that the state's stormwater infrastructure is under, undersized because its standards are based on data, rainfall data that was taken in, in the 1990s. Since then, the amount of rain in the state has increased from 2 to 10%. And by 2050, it's supposed to increase from 20 to 50%. So the design standards for stormwater systems are questionable, are, it seems undersized. Right now, the mostly undeveloped lots absorb a lot of water themselves. But with the addition of the hardscape, the impervious surface, I, we think there'll be more runoff. The plans call for raising of the ground level of where the houses are located and then grading the land backwards. Well, we think the water that grows backwards will flow into our property and onto our neighbor's property. The bio detention basin, half of it is planned to be in this wetlands area. It's really not clear how that's going to work. Are they going to fill it in and then dig another basin? It already functions as a rain garden. So what are they gaining by, with this bio detention basin? The bio detention basin is designed to standards to take, take care of a percentage of the increased precipitation for 2, 10, and 100-year storms. Well, what happens to the other percentage that the bio detention, we think it's going to flow right onto our property?
It's time, Madam Chair.
Ms. Chen, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the questions that you're raising are exactly, get to exactly the concerns that were, were at least overlap with the concerns raised by our stormwater consultant and our land use engineer. And those are, you know, hopefully going to be addressed by the applicant before we hear this again. So, you know, this question of what, what we don't know, at least some of it is, is exactly what this applicant is being asked to, to try to address. And Yes.
We, I believe as her spouse, I also would be entitled to three minutes.
Yes, sir, you can go right ahead.
How about I yield so that my wife can finish her statement? And I will not make a statement until the next time this board convenes.
Okay, typically, we, we don't do that, but I, I don't want to be rude about it. So Ms. Chen, if you could, if you could carry on and just please finish up your statement, that'd be great.
And finally, we think the effectiveness of the storm, proposed stormwater management may decline over time. The bio detention basins need to be maintained. And I took a course from the Water Resources Program at Rutgers and they said, it's not uncommon for bio detention basins not to be properly maintained and then becomes an issue for the town. Also, the town, they're relying on porous pavement. Well, porous pavement is good for a while, but it fills in, moss grows, the ground compacts. And so over time, it's not as effective as initially. So in conclusion, we think that it's a shame if they're going to fill in this already existing depression and then put in a smaller bio detention basin. A final point is if you, oh, I'm sorry, I lost the pictures.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Is that you can see, we, on our side of the property, what happened? On our side of the property, we've been trying to plant native species and and for the benefit of the ecosystem. And we've looked at their proposed plantings. And while their plan, the project plan says they recommend low maintenance native plants. In fact, only 26% of the trees proposed to be planted, only 45% of the shrubs proposed to be planted are natives. So we are hoping that consideration be given to maintaining the existing function of this exist, of this what's been called a drainage area, just the drainage way, which continues on and extends over into the developer's Lot 44. Thank you.
Thank you. The really important issues that you're raising. And I'm sorry that by pressing you for, on, on time, I'm sorry if it seemed like I was diminishing that. I certainly didn't mean to. These are important issues. Ms. Schur?
If they can take down their presentation, thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
Hi.
Mr. Mr. Muller will swear you in.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed, please say your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Lisa Schur, S-C-H-U-R. I live at 34 Wilson Road in Princeton. I'm a professor and an attorney at Rutgers University. Should I start?
Yes, go right ahead. Thank you.
Thank you for, for allowing me to speak here. And I realized that some of my questions, Mr. Scoopian and Mr. Purcell raised them, so I'll try and be very brief here. I just want to say that I've been living here for I just want to say that I've been living here for ten years. And in that time, as Mr. Scoopian said, I've seen more infrequent storms, even over the last ten years. And I've seen water literally flowing down Wilson Road and being backed up from a storm drain, which is right in front of my neighbor's property, further away from, from Westcott. And sometimes it just, it just can't handle that. So I'm very concerned about what possibly could happen. Um, I've seen our basement flooded a bunch of times and even our, our bedroom a couple of times. I just want to quickly refer to something that Ms. Chen was, was talking about. The New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection twenty twenty scientific report on climate change talks about how New Jersey is warming faster than the rest of the northeastern region and the world. And what that means is that annual precipitation is expected to increase by four to eleven percent by twenty fifty. And the intensity and frequency of precipitation events is also expected to increase significantly. So I just want to make sure that that information is part of Mr. Scoopian and Mr. Purcell's investigation going forward, that we can't base decisions based on current precipitation. We need to see what's happening in the next ten, twenty, thirty years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. These are questions that DEP is grappling with every single day. And unfortunately, they have not caught up with the science. But, um, but your points are very well taken. Ms. Philip, can you bring over our next couple of speakers, please?
Charles Roth, and then Sue Nemeth, and then Anisa.
Okay. Mister Roth?
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please say your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Charles Roth. Last name spelled R O T H.
Okay.
Thank you. So I live at twenty-two Duffield Place with my wife Lori and my family. We've lived here since the year two thousand, so quite some time now. And we are at the, at the, that rear corner of the, the proposed properties. You may have seen our, our names on some of the plans that, that were presented. And so we're located right near where this, this bio retention basin is going to be located. And so, you know, what it sounds like is going to happen is that, you know, they're going to take all their water and it's basically going to be filtered and essentially dumped out right near, you know, right into the borderline with our property. So, so this is obviously of considerable concern to us. So, you know, I thank, I thank the Chens for providing, you know, some, some pictures for you to kind of see what, what this property looks like. And as Ms. Schur noted, you know, we also get, you know, floods in our basement, you know, quite frequently. It's not a, it's not a one, once a year occurrence, you know, water comes in throughout the year. And we need to have, you know, a French drain and a, and a sump pump to, to manage that. And so, you know, increased water from what would happen with this property would, you know, would definitely affect us adversely. You know, to that end, just a couple of other comments about things that came up during, during the presentations tonight. Yeah, I have to agree when you talk about the lawn, I mean, they're, they're really not going to have a lawn there. As you kind of saw from some of the pictures that were presented, that area is essentially a swab. I mean, it's, it's not going to be a lawn. And one other point that the board may be interested in, Mister Quinn was asking about bicycle pedestrian safety. And just so the people know that where that sidewalk will be, that is, that's a cut through. That's actually very widely trafficked because it basically connects town to, to Mountain Avenue and the, you know, Mountain Lakes area there. So there are lots of people going through there all the time. And so, you know, you want to make sure that that is handled in a way that pedestrians and bicycles can, can manage it safely and efficiently. And then, you know, one other minor point is, you know, was mentioned that the impact here would be adding two homes. Well, you know, currently there's, there's a home there, but it's boarded up. All right. So it's, you're really thinking about the impact of adding three homes as the complete plan is. In addition, that, you know, the next home up is for sale. You know, that area, because of the, the issues that exist with, you know, with stormwater in the back and, and two oh six on the front, I think they're going to have a lot of trouble in, in, in selling these properties and having people live in them. And so that, you know, the impact there, the additional impact there is going to be with this homeowners association. And are there actually going to be people living in here and managing this, this power retention basin? So, so this summarizes my concerns and I'll stop here and thanks a lot for listening to me.
Thank you.
Okay, I move Sue Nemeth over and then the last person is, I'm sorry, Anisa Melé.
Or Meele?
If you could raise your.
Ms. Nemeth, welcome.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, so sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Thank you. My name is Gabriela Susan Nemeth, and I live at one ninety-six Baird Lane, which is going to be directly downhill of this elevated, you know, property. And, you know, in the last ten years since we've moved here, are, we've just been struggling with the flooding in our own property. And I mean, it's dramatic and it has gotten much worse. The water now, it literally encapsulates our house pretty regularly, a few times a year at this point, from just rain, rainwater, storms. The storm drainage system on Baird Lane cannot accommodate the water now. It just, I mean, the roadway is flooded. We've had one of our cars totaled. I had, I bought flood insurance, federal flood insurance, even though we're not technically in a flood zone. We should be in a flood zone. It, the water is already unmanageable. And our, our yard is settling, our house is settling. We have a sinkhole that developed next to the storm drain right in front of our house, an actual sinkhole. We had to call the town and they filled it in, but it, you know, we're, we're incredibly concerned about this development in the property. And, and of course, we're hopeful if they can come up with a plan that actually addresses the current situation and what we're likely to see in the future as these storms become increasingly ferocious and the water builds up. It just, we're, we're in, the roadway regularly floods, regularly floods. Our homes are surrounded by water. Our backyards are sponge-like right now. And I just, it's hard for me to imagine how I'm going to live on those properties. And, you know, their basements will be underwater. And their properties will be, there won't be any place to walk in their backyards at all, even if they have all the water retention devices they had, they described. So I just, I'm thrilled that you guys are doing your due diligence and you asked all the right questions. And I feel confident that we will get some resolution to this, whether or not this property is even feasible. You know, these development, this development is feasible, but I have my doubts. I have other concerns also about the dangerous curve on two oh six, the staging of heavy equipment during the building phase. Will it be on our street? I mean, I'm just wondering, where will they put it all while they're building the homes? Because there's no way to put them in the back of those properties. They're too wet. And so I, you know, I look forward to seeing where this goes. And I'm not opposed to some lovely new single family homes on the road. But I do feel like it, that we have not addressed the, the water retention, the stormwater drainage, the wetlands issue. And frankly, even the wildlife that's back there right now. We're, there are, there's just a tremendous amount of wildlife in the back there. Where do those animals go? How will that be addressed? Just, I'm just curious about it, but I appreciate your due diligence, as I said. And thank you for the opportunity to say a few things.
Thank you. Um, I'm look, ah, here we go.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My first name is Anissa, last name is Meeley, M E L E.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Anissa Meeley and my address is forty-nine Wilson Road. That's block six eight oh two, the lot two. And my husband and I have owned our property since two thousand and four. Our property is adjacent to the Baird lots on which West Windsor Real Estate is requesting the subdivision change in the slight plan approval. And while I have numerous concerns about the plan, excessive tree removal, potential traffic impact on two oh six, my primary focus within the three minutes, due to time limitations, is going to be regarding the disturbance of the isolated wetland area that abuts our property. I'm going to share a photo that was taken years ago. I hope that this. I hope, can everyone see the photo?
Yeah, so let's mark that as exhibit oh two.
So this photo was taken some years ago, but if anything, the water and the rainfall has only dramatically increased. And I think that it shares, kind of gives a very visual of what Sue was just describing. If you look, there's water everywhere. I'm going to describe it so you understand that the property line between our lot and the Baird lots is located between the isolated wetland area and the row of evergreens. So the row of evergreens were planted by our family in a way to provide a buffer from two oh six. The shared photo shows, you know, major flooding on the lots behind the trees. And it shows that the Baird lots are a natural water collection area. Or as the Princeton Environmental Commission noted, the wetland area is a giant sponge. It's a giant sponge for our entire neighborhood. The photo also documents that our backyard, which is in front of the trees at this time, it does not have standing or pooling water after a waterfall. It shows that the water problems on this lot, they are complicated and they are excessive. It is my recommendation that West Windsor Real Estate return to an original plan that was shared originally in two thousand and seven with neighbors. And it included to build two single family homes, a plan that we feel would not require the subdivision. And it would also limit potential water encroachment and possible future damages for all the neighbors. So thank you. I'm very grateful for the board tonight for identifying the problems on the plan. That was an application that was submitted, for taking the time to hear the neighbors, to hear our concerns and to view this photo. Because again, I feel like it, it gives a very strong visual as to what we're also very concerned about. So thank you.
Thank you.
And can everyone please get me a copy of your exhibits?
Right, so the folks who shared their screens should provide copies of those images to Carrie Phillip in the planning office, the Princeton Planning Office. She is the secretary to the planning board and administrative secretary. And, um, her email is easily findable on the, if you Google Princeton Planning Board. So she needs to have those for the file and for, and to post up on the web too, I guess. All right. So we've heard from all the members of the public who wish to speak tonight. Thus, I will close the portion of tonight's hearing. And we should talk about a date by which the applicant feels confident that they can have the information that Mr. Purcell, Mr. Scoopian, and Mr. Dobremilsky need.
Okay, Wayne, how long do you think it'll take you to put something together?
I mean, between survey work and engineering, there's no way we could have it in two weeks to make the ten days prior for another meeting. So if we kicked it more, one more than that, I, I think we'd have time to get it done and hopefully even have a discussion with, you know, township professionals to, you know, hopefully resolve the concerns.
Yeah, I think the discussion part is important.
I was just going to say that. I think it's very important. And that's, that seems to me very aggressive, to tell you the truth. But maybe, maybe Jim, et cetera, can jump in on this and, and Joe, et cetera, and Dan, and could give their reaction to that.
Yeah, I agree. I've already had a discussion with someone from the engineering office regarding my report. So yeah, we're always, that, that's what we're here for. If it's particularly with the issues faced, with the issues on this site, yeah, the more we can work out ahead of time, the better.
Absolutely.
Um, Carrie, do we have, I just want to make sure there's plenty of time. And I know that we have other applications pending. Is, do we have room on the April seventh agenda, Carrie?
Well, the April seventh, it's, uh, and the twenty-first, we have two potential applicants for that night. And nothing is confirmed. We could always tack this on to one of those. But we're talking about, do you want to tell you which projects?
Is one of them landwin?
Uh, no, no.
I only say that because I, I, that keeps popping up on my planning board calendar.
That's in March.
Okay.
So that would be simplified living and maybe Turhune, but there's stormwater concerns for that problem, property too. Um, and then I really May is, is my first comfortable month that I would put this back on. And that would give plenty of opportunity to work, work out the stormwater.
Is that acceptable to you? I'm looking around my screen for.
Mister Crumholtz.
Applicant's attorney. Yes, I'm sorry, Mister Crumholtz. Yes, is that acceptable?
Howard, is that okay? Come back in May?
I, you know, obviously sooner is better. I, I have heard the, the concerns of the neighbors. I obviously recognize the seriousness of what we're facing here. But if Wayne, if you can tell me that we can have this meeting and submit this work for April twenty-third, I'd like to take advantage of what I thought was an opening there.
April twenty-first?
Was it twenty-first?
It's not a problem on my part, but, you know, that's certainly up to the board and their schedule.
It, it's hard to say. We have a redevelopment project coming up that we need to look at.
Right. I don't want to complicate the notice, Scott, so why don't we take the May date and we'll work to that?
So that would be May fifth?
Thank you very much.
Great.
And again, I, I just want to reiterate, I assume that the people who made comments are still listening, the public comments. And, and these are not, these are concerns that we take very seriously. And I'm going to ensure that we comply with DEP regulations and, and answer the questions that have been raised tonight.
Thanks, Mister Raven. I, I know it's been a long and I can tell, uh, sometimes frustrating process. And, but this is not your first rodeo. And we appreciate your, your, your thoughts that you've shared and look forward to seeing this again when a bunch of questions have been answered.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, is this still going to be a timely application? Does, does it have to be an agreement on an extension of some type?
Yes, they just agreed to extend to an extension that takes us to the first meeting in May.
Okay, there's nothing else, there's nothing else formal has to be done.
Yes, I get it in writing for the file.
That's a great segue for Mister Mueller.
Right, that would, that would be an extension to the sixth. And if Scott could put on the record that he agrees to that and then follow up with that with a, a letter to Carrie.
Yes, I do agree to that and I will put that in a letter.
Good, thank you.
And, excuse me, will there be no further notice?
Right, yeah. And just the public should know that. It's being carried to a date certain and there will be no further notice.
So that is Thursday, May fifth.
Right.
When we'll, when we'll see this on the agenda again and there will be no further notice. Okay.
Oh, no, no.
Sorry, sorry.
That was not a vote.
That was not meant for anybody.
Happened to me in the office.
Had it up to here, huh? Okay, well, thank you all. I, I think we're, we're done here. Thanks again. The applicant, we'll see you in May. Is there anything, anything else for the attendees? There are nineteen attendees now, in addition to us panelists. And in the heart of the meeting, there were twenty-five. Just to let the folks who are attending know, know at least the number of other, of other folks who were tuned in.
Mr. Cohen, do your duty.
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it and we'll see you a week from Saturday.
Say goodnight, class.